It's a great idea. I never thought about that.
Yeah, because I have one where I eat my rice, but then those things that I do like um like nachos and stuff like that. And if I cheese, I keep it on my um.
You guys serve them with dough? You should.
See, I've been thinking about it.
I would. I want to, but it's just not my plan. I really wanna, we wanna do chicharron.
I love chicharron.
It'd be badass.
Yeah.
There you go, do that.
The chicharron. Like really?
If you can make it.
Real, real chicharron?
Yeah, yeah.
You know what I need to learn about is uh chicharron and uh guacamole?
Oh, totally.
Yeah.
Chicharron and uh cheese sauce is so good. And guacamole, totally, yes.
Yeah, that's so funny because I did work in my, because I used to shower and I had just got nachos and I had all the back of chicharron. And tell people, they always people grab the back of chicharron and have the cheese sauce to their, trust me. What do you mean? So I tried to wrap the cheese. Pretty good, yeah. Yeah, yeah, I gotta rewrap. My, I know we just picked a couple of items. Quick.
Hey, you know.
Eric told me that they try selling tall ones.
Oh, yeah?
They are, right Tommy? I think you know.
Oh, I bet, yeah.
You know they have parkour item for a lot of, a lot of types of things?
Yeah.
Good morning.
Hey, good afternoon, good evening. How you doing?
So, it's not open?
Yeah. How you doing?
Good.
How long have you been doing that?
Um.
How long have you been doing that?
Forty-six weeks and I think I started.
You started a while back.
Same guy, I was becoming closer. But yesterday I, Saturday was a, working on my, sound there. Supervising.
Uh huh.
But I had to run back to Hollister.
Oh.
So I was trying to use my options. I was driving fast.
Uh huh.
Using two hands and sending my arm and um.
So are we shoulder or arm?
Arm.
Yeah.
Twenty, shoulder's good.
Shoulder's good, huh?
But then earlier today I was, I have peanuts in my hand, open it, peanuts in my hand went to, going in my mouth. So I didn't, I didn't shoot myself.
Yeah. I'm the doctor guy. Yeah.
How you doing?
How are you?
Good. Are there speakers that say maybe if you kill off?
So there typically is and the clerk will give them, let me go.
Okay.
What, what?
Mary, what's jumping down?
That's okay.
Who, Mary, what is he?
A speaker card?
Great.
Oh, thank you. It's this gentleman right here, she's, thank you.
Got it. So you first, when you got the four?
Uh, no, it's simple. It's color bringing, uh, different names, um, you know, just where you live, um, you want to get a first full number on that. The date and the period, you're going to talk about the what, if there's any more, you guys?
Actually do a one, just do a. Have they just like called with that? Do they have a card?
Yeah, we got, we're talking to here. There is.
Okay.
N G seven.
Is that the same, um? Is it, is it your?
Yeah, I'll be right here at this point right now.
Yeah.
Trying to get all the. Pass option.
You guys have a little dance going on?
Yeah.
Yeah, check out.
Yeah. All right, speak.
Yeah, you have.
Awesome. Young man, did you bring some steak with you?
He should have.
And you are the senior? Awesome, how you been? It's been forever. Awesome. I tore my rotator bicep and, and felt like. Always.
That was San Diego, right?
Is this here, is that, I'm telling you.
Please go back to him then.
So they go right up there by the clerk's computer, it's just right across from me. And her name is Jennifer. You're welcome.
Oh, so. When I tell the story, if you don't get your guide calls.
No problem. Jennifer, they're putting speaker cards there.
Yes.
I'll call you.
Would you?
Yeah, 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 it's definitely useful. How you doing? Yeah, how you doing? Jason, would you, you from Hapa?
Hapa Brothers, yeah. Uh, food trucks.
Oh, oh, oh. Oh, yeah, we're gonna start the foodies.
Yeah.
Well, honestly, you guys are, you're certainly the food trucks.
Yeah, we're trying to.
Yeah, we're going big.
Sorry, my New York face is coming back on.
Awesome. And then, you know, our business council meeting that we have, um, we. Uh, it's going to be postponed because we need to get more participants, uh, from the. Hi. Um, uh, Assistant City Manager.
Hey, everybody.
Everybody's here.
Hey, hey.
Um, yeah, so we're going to be postponing it and, um. I'm just wondering, does he have your contact information? Uh, City Manager, Assistant City Manager?
It's not bye, I count someone first. Good, how are you both doing?
To get some.
I, very intent on emails.
Yeah.
Yeah, can we get him still, you can, there's a lot of this stuff we can talk about at the, um, Business Council. Yeah. There's that. It was supposed to be this week, next week, or was it? Well, we'll figure it out that day. Yeah. Yeah. Is that one of the, uh?
No, I mean, not that.
Is that me wanting to ask one, is it really good, good?
No, that's one of the hot topics. Maybe it works that way.
How you doing?
Good.
You're good?
I'm good, I live here in town. You're attending my first sales meeting.
Oh, okay. I'm very, 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 very.
Nice in Congress.
Awesome, where are you in it?
Uh, Freedom Boulevard and the, uh, Freedom Pride, Louisiana. It's all, I think so, to me, in public.
Oh, okay. Oh, yeah, yeah. Do you probably need divorcees? Well, what? I have a cup, bicep.
Oh, really? I have opened, uh, the long meal. Always.
How's it, how are you? I've seen you at multiple stages.
I know that's right, you tell me that.
Yeah, here.
Is he guys square? Hey.
Good. Okay, okay, well, yeah.
Carrie, Carrie got ahold of you?
Okay. All right, well, thank you.
Testing, testing. Hey, Darren. Good, how are you?
Doing well.
No, it's, it's still bitter. Yeah. Well, you know my. I don't know. So, if you agree to buy one. I'm sorry, all. How about you? It's a control. Yeah.
I don't know.
I didn't want to say that. Oh, it's not just one. Yeah. I didn't, um. It's not too many. You know, it's, um. That'd be a lot of. Yeah. Uh, well, it was like, it's pretty, yeah, so they, uh, there's all these different. Uh, you know, uh, what hour is it? I know. I'm sure. You're on camera. Just because you're on, doesn't show that. Yeah, so. I'll turn around, so that's how we. To do that party. You know, like, yeah, the pressure's a little down. I would do a, for, 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 probably. For the whole year, it's, 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 it's pretty cool. They don't let you use the shoulders though? She put it from. Oh, they're. Yeah, now, like, it's snowy and. I mean, I do admit it from a job. I do. Yeah, they're really enjoying this one back here, we want everybody to hear it. I, you know, I know from my. Yeah, I gave me a work in, a law. Like, I'm never. Restaurant down in San Francisco. There were two missions far. And then they thought it was a complete, a total. We bought it in a place now. And he, he was still on, uh, full. Uh, but, and then the United States. And then. Oh, really? Oh, no, I'm sorry, just saying that.
Yeah.
Recording in progress.
Mayor, we're ready when you are.
Good evening. This is a regular meeting of the Hollister City Council on February sixth, twenty twenty-three. The meeting is now called to order. It is six thirty P M. Councilmember Resendez, can you please lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
Yes. Ready, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
City Clerk, could you please call roll? Councilmember Perez?
Present.
Councilmember Resendez?
Present.
Vice Mayor Morales?
Here.
Councilmember Burns?
Here.
And Mayor Casey?
Here.
I'd like to report that the agenda for the City Council of the City of Hollister Regular Meeting of February sixth, twenty twenty-three, was posted on the bulletin board at City Hall on February first, twenty twenty-three at four forty P M, per Government Code Section five four nine five four point two. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, if I can make a request? I'm just wondering, I see quite a few members here in the audience tonight, and I was just wondering if we can take like a little poll? Um, if there's quite a few people here for the same item, maybe we can bring that forward to honor everybody's time and have them get home to their families, uh, and not have to sit through the entire meeting?
That would be fine. Um, can we take a poll, how many of you are here for the R V ordinance? Okay. And how many are here for the business program? Okay. Well, I think we could move the R V ordinance forward. Um, do we want to do it after consent or before?
I would suggest that we do it before the consent, if that's okay with the council.
Is that all right? Okay. All right, so let's do our first presentation. Staff, do you wanna?
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. I have the distinct privilege tonight to introduce to you Richie Sayavong. He's coming to us, uh, he's traveled over from Fresno. He works for the State Department of Insurance and is going to be giving a brief presentation on a low-cost insurance program that's available to our residents here in the community. At times, we like to bring forward community resources and make them public and allow you to hear from, from them and ask direct questions. And so Richie has agreed to come visit. He's making a tour throughout the Central Coast, and so, uh, we're happy to have him. With that, I'll pass it over to Richie.
Thank you for the introduction. Uh, as mentioned, my name is Richie Sayavong. I am the Associate Program Analyst that is assigned to the Central Coast, Central Valley, as well as the mountainous areas and parts of San Bernardino. I've worked with the California Department of Insurance, and by no means am I here to sell you any type of insurance. I'm here to let you know about what our department is and about one of our programs. So, as I mentioned, I'll talk about California Department of Insurance, also known as C D I, California Law regarding auto insurance, and the California Low Cost Auto Insurance Program, also known as C D, C L C A, how to qualify and how to apply, how you can partner with C D I and C L C A, and we'll have quick Q and A towards the end. Okay, so. Quick information about C D I. So, under the direction of Commissioner Ricardo Lara, he serves the Californians, uh, to protect Californians from fraud and abuse from all the types of insurance companies. So we regulate all lines of insurance, ranging from fire, home, life, auto. And we're even trying to pick up pet insurance. We don't really regulate health insurance, but that is something that we should know. Uh, so, to check, to make sure that all the insurance companies are playing fairly in the marketplace, the commissioner's making sure that they do have the funds to play, pay claims, also that they're being solvent. Meaning, we can't let them do business if they don't have funds, if they're not doing the right thing to protect you, to serve you Californians. Also, California is the largest marketplace in the United States, fourth largest in the world, and collectively, as Californians, we pay three hundred forty billion dollars annually in premiums, so somebody has to regulate that, right? So, uh, if you're ever curious about your insurance policy, ever wondering if your broker or agent is licensed and in good standing, you can visit our website at insurance.ca.gov. If you're ever wondering what your insurance policy covers, what it details, we can go over with you line by line. Our phone number right there is one eight hundred nine two seven four three five seven. Uh, we both, we have English and Spanish and multiple languages available for you to contact the insurance. Okay, so let's dive into the California law. So in California, to drive on the road, you do have to have proof of financial responsibility of your vehicle. So at minimum, you have to have liability insurance. So when you do get pulled over and you don't have insurance, there's a lot of penalties involved, right? So you get the ticket, of course, that's about three hundred seventy-five dollars. Your car gets impounded, your license gets suspended, the cost of pulling your car out of the impound all racks up to thousands of dollars, right? So, what can you do? You can get C L C A. So C L C A, the California Low Cost Auto Insurance Program, has been around and established by the statute since nineteen ninety-nine and been around since two thousand. So the goal of the program is to provide low-cost liability insurance to Californians, regardless of immigration status. C L C A is a state program. There is no state tax dollars that goes into this. This is simply a pool of auto insurance companies that are providing this program to provide liability insurance to Californians. And of course, the goal is to decrease the number of uninsured drivers. So, how do you qualify? Well, you have to have a valid driver's license or an A B sixty for undocumented drivers, a vehicle value of twenty-five thousand dollars or less, and it can't be financed through a loan. You do meet, you have to meet income guidelines. I'll go over that shortly. Uh, and you have to be at least sixteen years old, and the asterisk there, you can't have a bad driving record for the past three years, so not multiple speeding tickets, you can't have any accidents with bodily injury, so that does count towards this program. So we're looking at the state coverage and rates. So we are in, I believe, Santa Clara County, is that correct? Sa, oh, San Benito County, yeah, a lot of counties. So it is falling under the, let's see, tier one. So tier one, you're looking at the base rate of two hundred forty-four dollars a year, and it does go up based on the percentage of needed. So if, the percentage there, if you're a single driver for nineteen to twenty-four, your, your rate does go up a little bit, and then if you're driving less than three years, and if you're, uh, sixteen to eighteen years old, you're looking at close to four hundred eighty-eight dollars a year. So, yeah. And then the thing with C L C A, it does count the number of household, uh, sorry, dependents in your household. So if you have a household of multiple people, uh, one person, you're looking at thirty-five thousand, four hundred fifty, being the max that you can earn for people is seventy-five thousand. This does change annually. It goes with the federal poverty rate. So as I mentioned, what do you need to apply? Your driver's license, your A B sixty, valid registration, proof of income, and a down payment of twenty percent of the annual premium. So the proof of income, as I mentioned, you'll need a PASTA, a W two, a ten ninety-nine, S S I statement, et cetera. So another thing that's really, really great about this program is that if you qualify for CalFresh, CalWorks, Medi-Cal, Medicaid, California Lifeline, any of the county or state-funded programs that test means of income, you do qualify for C L C A. And there is a complete list available on mylowcostauto.com. So how can you apply? Give us a, a visit at mylowcostauto.com. The eligibility questionnaire is about seven questions, pretty quick, and it's all online. If you're, if you are kind of stuck on it and you're wondering more questions, we do have a website available and the chat in English and Spanish, and the direct line to contact C L C A is eight six 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 zero two eight eight six one. So you're wondering, this is a really great program, right? How can you work with the California Department of Insurance? How can you sell C L C A? Well, you can help us disseminate educational information about C L C A throughout the community, share our information through your website and your social media platform, which I'm hoping the City of Hollister does add to their website, and invite us to your community outreach events in the area. I am in Fresno, so it's not too far off for me to come out and visit, and we can always present to your staff or community group during their trainings or meetings, and refer us to any collaborative groups that partners with low to moderate income Californians. So, for more information about C L C A, give us, uh, the website a visit at mylowcostauto.com, or if you'd like to call, it's eight six 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 zero two eight eight six one. And if you're ever curious about any type of insurance question, if you're shopping for insurance, give us our, give our website a visit as well at insurance.ca.gov, and the consumer hotline is at eight hundred nine two seven four three five seven. And this will conclude my presentation. Are there any questions?
Councilmember Burns?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. First of all, amazing, thank you. You, you rolled through that and I really appreciate that. I could have, I was anticipating this would be maybe a thirty-minute presentation, and I'm sure you could, but, but I appreciate that, and, and thank you for driving.
And thank you for driving from Fresno. I'm all too familiar with that drive. I want to ask you, and this is going to sound a bit facetious, but it's not intended to be. So, members in the audience, please keep your applause down or your laughter. Does this insurance, is it also available for retirees? And is it also available for people wanting to insure RVs, boats, or motorcycles?
So, the expansion of that, that would definitely go towards more of our consumer hotline. So, if you're shopping for those specific types of insurance, this is more geared towards auto insurance. So, I mean, if we're just looking for liability for RVs, possibly it'll fall under this umbrella. But it doesn't hurt to ask the CLCA people.
Okay, thanks. I didn't intend to put you on the spot.
Oh, not a problem.
It's just kind of a germane topic tonight. Thanks.
Any other questions? Comments? I thought it was a great presentation, thank you. I'm hoping that we will be sharing it out on social media and maybe partnering with some events to get the word out. Sometimes it's hard to get the word out to everyone, but hopefully.
So, I do have flyers, Mayor, and more brochures. So, if I could leave them with the city clerk, okay, perfect.
Do we have any public comment?
Mayor Casey, we do not have any public comments for this item.
Okay. Well, thank you very much. I think before we go to the consent agenda, we're going to do Item F1, the RV Ordinance.
Madam Mayor, members of the City Council, Item F1 is ordinance number 1228. Ordinance of the City of Hollister, mending Chapter 10.10, recreational vehicle and boats in the Hollister Municipal Code, related to the use and storage of recreational vehicles and police. Recommendation of staff, this ordinance has come, second time it's coming back to the council. We made some amendments based on last council meeting, removing two conditions and clarifying on the fines involved. The two conditions were to remove the condition of having covers on the recreational vehicles and no requirement for it to be parked parallel to the driveway. Staff recommends the City Council read by title only, waive full reading, and introduce ordinance number 1228 entitled, "Ordinance Number 1228, Ordinance of the City of Hollister, Amending Chapter 10.10, recreational vehicle and boats of the Hollister Municipal Code, relating to the use and storage of recreational vehicles, and schedule a second reading and adoption of the ordinance for the February 21, 2023 City Council Meeting."
All right. Do we have any questions from council?
Mayor?
Councilmember Burns?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. So, Chief, in looking at the revised ordinance on page 230 of the council packet under Section 4A, which is violations of Section 10.10.030 or any subdivision of this chapter, shall be assessed in administrative citation pursuant to Chapter 1.18 of the Hollister Municipal Code and shall be in the amount consistent with this section. So, I know that you were kind enough to share with us a previous City Council Resolution from 2013, number 119. And the fines in that resolution were $200, $500, and $750. That resolution was adopted on August 19 of 2013. And so, what are the, what are the proposed fines going to be with this ordinance? I didn't see anything specific except for the cross-reference.
You're correct, and that is the basis, the 10.10 section as it is, the amounts you said. I thought it was 250, 500, 750, which was outlined in there. But those would be the fines associated with this violation of this ordinance. As always, you know, we try to give a warning first for the ongoing offenses if a vehicle doesn't fit the guidelines of the driveway. But those are going to be the fines associated with this section. According to legal counsel, those are the ones that are in place right now. And that resolution that you read is the latest one that's been passed by this council.
Uh, thank you, Chief. Do you, do you have a sense for, I know that you've just recently inherited code enforcement, but do you have a sense, or city manager, do you know how much money has been collected in the past year for these type of offenses? Uh, no, I don't have that number offhand, but I don't think it's that, it's not been that significant. Right, and I understand the goal to gain compliance. Correct. I'm supportive of the ordinance overall. However, I can't support $200, $500, and $750 in fines. It just seems excessive. We had somebody from our last presenter talking about if you get a ticket, it's probably less than this, and it just seems excessive to me. I understand that there's an overhead for the cost of doing business and that the taxpayers shouldn't have to pay for people that choose to violate. But maybe you might pursue in the event you don't already have an administrative fee in place for real staff time involved. You absolutely have the authority to do something like that. And I'm more than happy to point you in the right direction for that if you want. I will tell you, staff is working on that piece right now. Okay. But we don't have that in place right now. Right, right. So, anyway, I'm supportive with the exception of the fine part of this ordinance. Thank you.
Do we have any other questions?
If I may add, Madam Mayor, the whole reason, we do seek compliance, but the fine is a lesser amount than 250, people are going to risk getting caught over storing their vehicle if it's not legally allowed to be stored in their property. And like I said, if it's, if it's, what we consistently have been doing is giving people warning and ample time and even extensions if they can't find a place to put their trailer. And this is for the situation where it can't legally be parked in front of their house if it doesn't fit the conditions that are being passed on this ordinance. So, it should be some significance. We have vehicle code citations for parking violations that are $30, $35, and people often say, I'll risk taking if I get one. So, it has to be some risk. So, that's why it's 250. But at the same time, we've given almost everyone, without exception, warnings and even extensions to try to reach compliance.
Any other questions from council?
No, I'm in agreement with the fines are, seem excessive.
Well, I missed the discussion that was taking place at the last meeting, so I was glad to see the cover issue taken off because I know I did get comments from the public that it was, would be difficult taking it off and putting it back on over and over. So, glad to see that. Other than that, I don't have any comments. So, do we have members of? Oh, sorry.
Yeah, geez, you gave me too much time, I think. Too much time to think I'll come up with something. You know, I just wanted to point out that, you know, that this is a great way for us to come together and find a resolution to all this. And you know, this has been a problem. You can see all the residents, thank you guys for showing up. But I'm really interested in hearing from you guys instead of from us. And so, that's, I'll reserve any other comments for later.
Okay, can we go to public comment?
Mayor Casey, our first public comment is from Jim Johnson.
Well, this is an unusual place for me to be. I've covered literally hundreds of council and Board of Supervisors meetings during my career as a reporter. And I always wondered how nervous I'd be standing up here. It's considerable. So, first of all, I'd just like to praise all of you and staff for what I believe to be, it seems to me, a fairly, fairly rapid response to a community concern. But I do, and I thank you on behalf of my neighbors who can fit their RV or their boat in their yard, their driveway. However, I have a trailer that on occasion I'll bring back to my home to load it and also to charge it, to let the refrigerator get up to cold and so that I can start packing food in it. And I've been, I was warned, actually officially, I believe I was cited, but it was without any monetary consequence. And warned that I needed to move my trailer. And I was told that I had a three-day period to move it. And that that was generally the, the theory that the city was using was three days was enough to pack the trailer and get it ready to take out on a trip. And so, I'm wondering why we would add the regulatory, the additional regulation of requiring a permit for every time I want to bring home my trailer to pack it. And again, I store mine in a, in a storage yard. As you probably know, there's very limited availability. So, not everybody has that ability and luxury to do that. But I would just ask, and then the orange cone thing, while it may be a safety issue, I'm not sure that that's necessary. So, I'd like you to look at that, too, that, that seems a little excessive. I think the point of that is to make sure that vehicles can see the trailer. I guarantee you, vehicles will see the trailer. And the orange cones will actually make it so they have to go further around the trailer, just cause a larger hazard. And so, I'd like you to just reconsider the permit. I think that if, maybe the permit could be for a longer period than three days. And, or, you know, if, you know, you want to, you want to let people do it for five or six times a year, I think that's reasonable. And then anything over that could be a permit situation. And, and again, the fines are excessive, $250. I understand that. And then finally, I just, I'd just say that I would encourage you to have a little bit more detail about enforcement policy, too. I want to know what kind of enforcement approach is going to be taken.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mayor Casey, the next speaker is Brian Dubay. My apologies if I messed up your last name.
It's correct. Most people don't get it correct. I've been called Doobie most of my life. I have a 38-foot Class A, and I agree with some of what the gentleman said is that me and my wife are retired, so, you know, we've spent all these years to buy this and go on trips. We do bring it home usually two days before our trip. It takes me a full day to wash it, clean it up, because you got to make them look nice, power it up, get the refrigerator cooled down, because we have a full-size refrigerator in there, get all the food packed and everything else. But all my neighbors around my area know that I don't take advantage of it. I do store it out at Minimax. So, I just bring it home, do my thing, go on a trip, come home, unload it, take it back. I did have a little incident last year where an officer came knocking at my door when my coach was out front. Said that someone complained that they thought someone was living in it. And I said, well, yeah, we do, we go on trip. We just got back the other day. Says, well, you can't park there. Said, well, I'm unloading it and everything, and I'm going to be moving it. He says, well, I won't cite you this time. I went, this time? Okay. So, you know, I think something needs to happen there. As far as the permit thing, which I heard about, I don't have too much of a problem with permits because of the fact that I was a contractor for 40 years. I dealt with permits. As long as they don't take a long time to get and don't cost anything, I don't have much of a problem with that. As far as a lot of time, whatever you guys come up with, as long as we can have enough time to do what we need to do to it. And I think that's really about it. Don't want to listen to this buzzer here. Thank you.
The next public speaker we have is Jerry Bonvy.
I don't do off the cuff. Mayor Casey, councilmembers, good evening. I am Jerry Bonvy, and I live on Sunset Drive. I would like to thank all of you for taking the time to address the recreational vehicle parking issue. Hollister has many other pressing issues right now, so I appreciate the time and effort that you are putting in to revising the RV parking ordinance. As I stated in my recent email, I understand that an RV parking ordinance is necessary for everyone's safety and to avoid neighborhood blight. Boats and RVs should not be permanently parked on the street, but owners should be able to park on the street for a few days for loading and unloading. However, the idea of requiring owners who cannot park on their own property to obtain a parking permit from the city every time they want to use, excuse me, use their boat or RV as another layer of government bureaucracy, and it amounts to having to get the city's permission for them to use their recreational vehicle. Please reconsider the parking permit idea. Also, covering the boat or RV should be the owner's decision, not the city's. I can't speak for other RV owners, but I suspect that a number of us feel the same way. We should not be required to keep the boat or RV covered. We should be allowed to park in our own driveways as long as the RV fits in the space regardless of direction, parallel, perpendicular, or angled. The RV does not interfere with anyone's access or right-of-way. The RV is clean and well-maintained, and the RV is not being used as a residence. Thank you for considering these suggestions and for listening to your constituents.
Thank you.
The next speaker we have is Luke Markham.
I don't do off the cuff either. Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Casey. You got to, you left early last time, so you're back to hear me this time. Thank you. I know you had an important meeting in Washington. Other council members and city administration. Chief, we spoke on the phone the other day. Thank you for taking that time. Regarding parking and storage of recreational vehicle and boat storage on private driveways, four years ago, we requested to be informed as this same issue progressed through the Planning Commission. We have to date not received that communication. Looking into past City Council and Planning Commission minutes, it appears that on or about April 25, 2019, the Planning Commission had taken action to adopt amendments to the Municipal Code regarding RV parking. Lack of affordable RV parking was acknowledged at the time by the Planning Commission as a valid concern in Hollister. With the dramatic increase in the purchasing of RVs during the pandemic, a pad this situation a couple of years ago has not resolved itself. In fact, it's gotten worse. As a retired couple on a pension, please explain to us the public benefit of paying for off-site storage when we have adequate, appropriate onsite parking at home that we already pay taxes on. These issues remain to be hurdles to off-site storage. Why are we revisiting them again? This morning, I Googled RV storage near my home here in Hollister. I live by the high school. Spoke with four local storage firms who informed me there's currently none available. Haven't had for some time, up to a year and a half. Give me your name, you can be on the waiting list. In regards to driveway storage, driveways recently approved using the same planning process in the City of Hollister in neighborhoods that I witnessed over this weekend don't even accommodate a full-size car, truck, or SUV without impinging upon the sidewalk. If it's not a hazard for them, why is it a hazard for me? They're all registered vehicles. Will it be this council's next demand of citizens to not allow residents to park in their own homes if they have too big a cars for short driveways? As far as RVs blocking the vision of neighborhoods, so do fences, hedge, trees, in addition to, it's my job to drive safely. And I see my time's running out, so I'm going to go to, as a City Council, the survey presented to you tonight still contains the opinions of outside residents, non-residents. As a new City Council, you're taking up an issue that previous councils really concur that it wasn't a valid community issue. This, is this really worth potential voter ill will that this council will be creating? Whose agenda does it serve for us to store our recreational vehicles offsite? What are your community values? Where do you stand on private property issues as our elected City Council members? Thank you for listening.
Mayor Casey, those are all the public comments we have for this item.
Yes, councilmember.
Thank you. So, I was having a conversation with a friend of mine over the weekend. I remember being on the council, and I, the conversation I had with my friend was it's like a pendulum going back and forth because there is a reason that this ordinance is there. Like, let's be honest, these, this does become a problem at times in communities. Like, let's be honest, these, this does become a problem at times in communities. That's why we have an ordinance. However, I'm going to go with the, the majority of the council and the community. I don't remember seeing this many people at the last meeting that we had about it. So I'm, uh, first off, I want to say thank you for coming tonight. Thank you for reaching out to us, and thank you for being involved in the process. Um, what I heard, and I agree with Councilmember Burns, uh, that the fines might be excessive. I did hear from the chief that there should be some type of monetary fines. I would suggest that we just move it down. Um, I'm just, I heard you say 30, 35. I put 35, 70, and 140 instead of the 250, 500, and 700. Maybe we can consider that. Um, I do think, Ms. Bonvy, that we do have to have permits, though, because, um, I'm not sure if you were the one that said no permits, but I don't know how we will track if people got a permit or not, or I think that would be very challenging. So I think we do have to have permits. I'm not opposed to, um, getting it a little bit more of a longer time period. I think that makes sense, and I just want to ensure that we're going to get the permits out, um, pretty quickly for these folks, and I would imagine that we can. Um, also about the, the direction, Ms. Bonvy, I think you brought that up as well. I think that's a little overkill, too. It shouldn't really, we shouldn't really police where or how they put it in their driveway, and I agree with the cones as well. Um, so those are my thoughts. I don't know if we're changing this so much, city attorney, that we'd have to bring it back because it's a second reading, but possibly, uh, but I think it's important, again, and I agree with, um, with the majority of the council up here, and thank you, guys, for all coming out here tonight.
Do we have any other questions?
Directional part was removed, right? Yeah, so that part's not, and the change, the cone, and the fee.
Councilmember Burns, you?
Uh, thank you. Paul, I don't know if you could, but I know you're magical, and could we, could we pull up the ordinance that is in the council packet? I think it would be helpful for the members of the public that may have not had the benefit of seeing the packet in advance to, to recognize a lot of the things that have been expressed in this, this meeting tonight have been adjusted, um, through a, through a compromise position. Um, city attorney, I'm, I'm confused. I was before. It was explained to me, and it didn't make sense then, but it wasn't the time to ask, but I'm going to ask again. Um, my understanding is that if you have a registered vehicle, in the California Vehicle Code, you are entitled to park it up to 72 hours before it has to be moved, which would coincide with something that one of the, uh, people, uh, talked about, Mr. Johnson, the three-day period. And so, um, if, I don't know how we could usurp the California Vehicle Code with a city ordinance and not have it be unconstitutional. And so I, I, I'm concerned about that. I was told at the last meeting that it was okay. It just makes no sense to me, and so I, I do have some concerns about that. Um, and, and chief, uh, with the permit, uh, process, I presume that's going to be online, and, and it would be something that somebody could, could do, um, within a short turnaround? Yes, no?
Yes, that's the plan. That's the plan, and we do have an ordinance in place that does allow, that does not allow for RV parking at all, you know, on our city streets. And the Constitution does allow for local governments to pass regulations that they show, they, they desire, and that's been on the books for a long time. Hasn't been enforced in a long time, and that's why we're, this is important to us to have this and start doing that.
Right. I, I understand that. I, I, I'm not convinced that that's, I understand what I've heard you say, chief. Um, I'm not convinced that, uh, a general law city can make a charter city rule and have it not be unconstitutional based on the, uh, the state constitution. I'm not a lawyer, but, um, it just seems, um, unusual to me that we could usurp state law, being a general law city that we are. And I, and I, I don't doubt what you say is true. I just question the validity of the rationale behind it, and, um, maybe past, uh, city attorneys had a different, different opinion. And so, uh, right, wrong, or indifferent, I just, i- i- if it is okay, then it is, but I would just want to make sure that, uh, that we move forward. I would also say that I would support, uh, Councilmember Rosendez's, uh, fine, uh, fine schedule at 35, 70, and 140, given the fact that we, it sounds like we are moving forward to go into a cost, uh, administrative fee at some point, and, um, given the fact that ordinances are living documents, and they have the ability to come back for minor tax amendments with almost very little, um, time and effort. And, and I'd like to see how this goes from this point forward based on the, the compromise, uh, and, and what's proposed once we get clarity from our city attorney. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. Councilmember Perez?
Yeah, my question was more towards the, the, um, the process of the permitting and our, um, I don't know, for all, all those RVers, it's like, while we're, while our camper is parked on the street and we're loading, uh, are we going to have a, you know, everyone gets a sticker, right? Yeah, um, is it going to be something like that so that the officers know not to just keep stopping by to not harass, but, you know, just to, to take up their time of following up with each RV that's out there to make sure that they have their permit?
It's Councilmember Pettis, thank you for the question. Uh, yes, our plan is to make it online or in person, whichever choi- they choose. We issue a permit with a CAD number and register that permit vehicle and address, so that if an officer sees the vehicle with the permit, they can run the CAD number and know that it's a valid permit and just move on. Um, we also want to take into consideration, because this happened before, with people putting old permits up on their vehicle, and if we run that CAD and it, it's an old permit, we will be able to determine that. It takes very little staff time for that. Um, if it's through an email, i- it could be something that they can print out at home and place it on their vehicle, or if they come pick it up, we can issue it at that time.
And also, um, being a, being a RV and jet ski owner or boat owner, um, you know, I think that the fines, I think 250 is a little bit much. 30 to me is way too low. I'm thinking like 1, 2, and 4. That's just me. But that's all.
Well, oop, did I turn off? No, I didn't. Um, I would tend to agree with your in-between as far as the, the fees. I think they are a little high, but I wouldn't want them to be so low that people would just ignore them and pay the fines. Um, so maybe somewhere in between. I am a little concerned that there are going to be RV owners that need to find storage, and hearing that four places are booked, and do we have, you know, how, you know, what do we do about that if somebody can't find, you know, a place? So that's concerning, but other than that, that's the only, only comments I have.
I, I do know that there is one, um, place that's, that's coming up on the Planning Commission, yeah.
So we will have soon, hopefully.
Yeah. Everyone rush out there.
Yeah. Just one more thing, just to recap on what was said today, uh, in regards to the cone, um, the ordinance says to place it five inches away from the, from the corner. It's no different from the, the PG&E trucks, the, the cable company, and it is a safety mechanism. Those cones are like $12 at the Ace Hardware, and it would be good to have that cone if, if you have a permit and you're placing a vehicle that's wider than a car out on your street, and some of our streets are narrow, and people need to understand that this is an ordinance that's going to be throughout the whole city. There's wide streets and there's narrow streets. Placing a cone is just another, another safety mechanism. That's why it's on there. Um, the fines were based on the, the standard administrative fines. They weren't created for this. This is part of the standard fines that we have when it comes to administrative citations. Um, um, the comments that were made about asking permission to park and requesting a permit to park it on the street, um, these vehicles, again, like I mentioned before, there's an ordinance that says you're not supposed to park it there at all unless you're loading, actively loading and unloading. And one of the comments that was made today about being contacted by police, his own statement was that he had had it parked there for days and said he was going to get to moving it. That happens a lot. People come in from their trip, they unload it, and if there's no incentive to move it, it stays there for days and days until somebody tells them to move it, and then they'll move it. So there has to be consistent, and I know you're listening from the people that are here, but you have not yet listened to everyone else who does not have an RV, who will be here when we pass this ordinance, and it's not fair and balanced. Then you will be hearing from them, because this has happened before. This has been revolving back and forth like a pendulum, like, uh, Councilmember Rosendez mentioned. It's, it's kind of like a pendulum. So we have not really heard from the people who do not have our, RVs, who do not want to see them on our streets, and do, and this is, in a sense, a compromise. And we have to keep in mind that a lot of the people who come here are responsible people that, that have good RVs, that are, they maintain them, but this is an ordinance that's going to affect the entire city, and not everyone maintains their RVs in the, in the proper way and, and/or are as nice as the ones that, uh, the people who chose to come here today.
Thank you. Councilmember?
Thank you. Just real quick, so what you're saying is that the cone doesn't have to go out into the street. It can just go parallel, like, right next to it, and, um, it's not going to cause any more of a, a safety hazard?
It specifically says five inches from, so the base could be actually underneath the, the vehicle. It's just, just on the corner?
Sure.
Corners, uh, on the street side corner.
Okay. And then I just want to reiterate with the chief that he's right. You guys are here tonight. You took part in the survey. You're being vocal. You're exercising your right. There are some people that are not as responsible as you, and we have to try to, uh, ensure that we find a, a balance between the two so that we don't have problems in the future. But again, thank you, guys, for coming. Um, again, I'm going to go with the majority on the council. I understand, um, the need for permits, and if they're going to make them online, that sounds like that's very, very efficient and convenient way to get them. Um, I understand the, the cones, and I do think that we should keep the fees as low as possible, um, just because, again, these people are responsible. They're, um, here tonight exercising their rights, and they're being involved, and I, I'd like to not punish them for, for, for that. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Was, were we going to have a reading of the ordinance?
Yeah, so it sounds like council is looking at reducing the fine amount. If the fine amount is reduced, first of all, you need to amend the schedule of penalties via resolution. I don't believe if it's reduced, it requires a public hearing, but I do want to check that to make sure. If you're going to increase it, definitely a public hearing. And then we'll also look at Councilmember Burns' question regarding the 17, 72 hours and how that vehicle code provision affects the terms of your ordinance. Um, so I would recommend that this come back for another first reading along with the resolution to reduce the fees.
So while this is going on, is there going to be still enforcement in the old ordinance? Or how does that work out?
Yes, uh, actually, there's been more violations now when people are listening to this going on. They're bringing their vehicles out. Just today, then, there was given another warning with the, people with multiple RVs on, in their trailers. We've had some huge boats coming out that we believe may not be.
Commercial.
Yeah, may not be within the ordinance, so we would recommend people, please do not move their RVs and wait until this is resolved. Um, as we anticipated, this wouldn't even be, uh, become an ordinance until March after the second reading, 30 days after the second reading, so now it's going to be postponed. So we just recommend people, please do not move your trailers onto your driveways until this can be resolved.
And, and on this ordinance, there's nothing that, um, um, talks about the commercial fisher, fishermen's boats, because they're mostly, they're bigger than the 30-foot anyways.
Yes, you're correct. There, there's nothing that specifically talks about the commercial status. It just talks about the size. And, uh, as you remember, we increased the size to 12 feet.
Yeah.
So that's how that boat showed up. They're advising that it's 12, it's under 12 feet.
The 12 feet is actually to the top.
To the top. So we still have to figure out a, a safe way to measure the top, so we don't want anyone hurt up there. So we already ordered a device that will allow us to measure vehicles and make it easier in the future.
Okay.
That's all I have.
All right, so we'll be bringing this back, then? So we can go to consent? Or?
I would support that.
Yeah, I mean, it hasn't been enforced that much in the past.
Right, right. So. All right, having said that, I, uh, I would propose that we bring it back to date, sir. And I guess the next council meeting would probably be, okay? And then that is?
The 21st.
On the 21st. So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Yes.
Motion carries. All right. Thank you all. So let's go to our consent agenda. Um, would any of the members of council or members of public like to pull an item from the consent agenda?
Madam Mayor, can I pull item A4 and A6, please?
Okay. Any others?
Yes, Mayor. I, I also wanted to pull 8, 6, 7, and 8, please.
Okay. And clerk, do, do we have?
Mayor, we do not have any public comments for any of the consent calendar items.
Okay, then let's see. So wait, may I have a motion to adopt the consent agenda with the exceptions of items 4, 6, 7, and 8?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Yes.
All opposed? No. Okay, motion carries. All right, let's, so, there we go. Let's go to item 4.
Good evening, Mayor Casey. Council, Tina Garza, to answer any questions, um, as it relates to Resolution 223-15. Um, and this would be the appropriation for $50,000 from the general fund to renovate softball field at Vista Park Hill.
Thank you, Tina. I'm just wondering, it says general fund, but then it says, in another part of it, it said that we had a fund. I should have circled that part. So I'm just getting some clarity here.
Okay. For, for clarity, um, staff worked with Junior Giants. Um, they have now changed their name to, um, Giants Community Fund, and we were able to apply for, um, funding, and they came back to us and said, "We have this funding. Your project can be up to $100,000. Um, could the city help with some of this cost?" So that's where we're at today.
That was my second question. Is there a matching, is there a matching fee? And I'm assuming now, hearing you say that, it's $50,000. So I'm not sure if that was really clear in the report. So, um, I guess if there's a matching fee, maybe we can just put, is there a matching fee? Did I miss it? Under financial impact?
I, I don't know if we want to, if we say it's a matching fee, but, what they're saying is it could cost $100,000 or more for all the renovations, but the city would be responsible just for $50,000 of that.
Why aren't we getting this out of the park funds? Why is it the general fund?
I don't.
Uh, because that ball field is already there where impact fees are for, uh, for new projects.
Okay, so up to $50,000, and we're going to get $50,000 from the Junior Giants. Okay?
We will work with them. They are kind of overseeing the project, and we just will say yes or no if we like something, and it'll be a very smooth process, um, if council approves. And then from there, we will have the Giants Community, um, a Giants, uh, player come down, and we'll have a big, grand opening for our community.
Sounds fun. Thank you.
Do we have any other questions? No? Do we need to take public comment on this as well?
There are no public comments on this one.
So is there a motion, then, to approve this?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
All right, so we'll go to item 6.
So, um, we have Carrie Wagner on, uh, from Wallace Group on the line in case you have any, uh, questions, and, nope. Oh, she had to go to her class. But, um, so I can, this is the, to bring on, uh, San Juan Oaks Development into the city, as it's been previously approved by LAPCO, and this is just to, the final step and to bring the sewer service to Hollister.
Okay, no questions?
Madam Mayor, I've got quite a few. Thank you. Brett, first off, uh, where are we with, uh, reviewing the impact fees for the sewer? Uh, my understanding is that it's been in the process for over a year now? Is that true?
Correct.
And why is it taking so long?
Uh, we're just trying to get some different financial information back and forth with them, but it should be really quick, real soon, but the impact fees, it doesn't appear like it's going to change that much. It's more. It's more the, the sewer rates. And the main thing we were trying to do is do the impact fees for the, to bring in water bonds.
Okay. If this was approved in two thousand fifteen, why are we talking about it today?
Uh, I was going to say developers here. Uh, it, it's just, it's the time to take, he can answer that one also.
My name is Michael Cady. I'm with Third Millennium Partners. We're the owner developer of San Juan Oaks. It, it is only on for tonight, the, the service of sewer by the City of Hollister has already been approved and has been approved by LAFCO. What you see before you tonight is a operating and maintenance agreement that's talking about the communication levels between us and the city. The San Juan Oak system is a private system that's going to be treated by the treatment plant. So you're not responsible for the maintenance of any of the new sewer. The sewer is already in. This is about if the city needs to shut down the facility for two hours, who do they contact? What are the protocols for the, for things like that? Um, so this is more of a maintenance and communication item. It's the, the, the city s- uh, serving the project is, that's already been approved.
So you're saying it was already approved through LAFCO?
Yes. Those memos are actually resolutions, actually not only by LAFCO, but also by the city council. So that's not up for debate tonight. Tonight is simply the communications and maintenance plan.
Is that correct, Brett?
That is correct.
So it says, and directing staff to apply for the LAFCO for services in our resolution tonight, under whereas.
It still needs to go back to, to LAFCO for this part of the agreement.
So it still needs to go back to LAFCO?
I don't think that's true, but.
So we've done an analysis of this and yes, it does need to go back to LAFCO. LAFCO's purpose is to approve agreements. It was unusual that they gave the okay to go ahead and do this absent an agreement, but the agreement needs to go back to LAFCO for approval.
So that's, that's what I'm getting at. If this was done in two thousand fifteen, why is it coming back here tonight? And I'm sorry, I don't know you and I understand that you're, you're working for the development. Uh, but I really am disappointed that there's not somebody from staff here to answer these questions. Also, it sounds like this should not be on the consent agenda. We're talking about how many single family homes, sir?
It's about a little bit less than eleven hundred, one thousand eighty-four.
Over a thousand?
And they're.
Single family homes?
One thousand of them are active adults. So let's use. So all this analysis was done as part of that process. So I mean, this is, the, the, the fact that the city is going to serve this is maybe surprised you because you weren't here in two thousand fifteen, uh, but this is simply an implementation of what's already been approved.
Sorry, uh, Kerry is on the line if you want to listen to.
Well, I do have quite a bit of questions and concerns. So we're talking about over a thousand single family, family homes in the county. My understanding, and I don't remember if anybody that was here before remembers, we are not supposed to provide city sewer services through LAFCO or with us if they're outside the city limits, outside the city sphere of influence. Is that not correct?
Uh, like I said, this was, as Michael said, this is an approval from the previous LAFCO and we're honoring.
And I also want to indicate, it's not, it's not LAFCO. The city council approved this too. There's a resolution in there for.
It doesn't matter if the city council or if LAFCO did it. I want to know if that's legal. Is it legal for us to do that? That's what I would like to know.
So that's what LAFCO is going to determine. So LAFCO does state that you cannot provide the services outside of city limits or outside of the sphere of influence. So I don't even know if LAFCO is going to approve this agreement. That's the, that's the big question.
I can tell you, if they have the votes on there, it will get approved. And that's what I'm worried about.
Well, I can, I can certainly tell you this, that there's been a considerable amount of investment based on these approvals. A considerable amount. There's, all of phase one has been improved. So um.
I understand that.
And I don't mean that bad. I just mean, that's the reason we have approvals, particularly for projects that have approved specific plan and a long-term plan. This was in SUIK, SEQA, there is a LAFCO annexation resolution, there's a city resolution saying we're going to do the service. This project's been on the boards for over a decade, so it's been part of all of your capacity analysis, all of your budgeting for the past eight-plus years. So I mean, I, it, it is not a, it's not a new topic.
And have you been working on the project since then, sir?
Uh, no, we've, we've, we've owned it for about two years now.
Okay. Do you know if the impact fees were lowered for your project?
Uh, we, we will pay the impact fees at the time of building permit. So whatever the building permit is that, when we go to pull off this building permit, that's the City of Hollister impact fee we'll pay.
Who brought this item to the council and how did it get on the consent agenda? Was it the developer or was it staff?
Yeah, I mean, this is, this is staff. I mean, this is, uh, like I said, the, in your staff report, you have the resolution that was approved by council back in two thousand fifteen. So this was just normal operations to put a closure to this process.
Okay, couple of little notes. I just got a couple of things that I've circled and I'm concerned about. Um, it says San Juan Oaks Mutual Water Company does not own a wastewater treatment plant and it's preferred, preferable according to policies of the Central Coast Regional Water that we authorize this. It's preferred. Does this mean that we have to approve this tonight legal?
So that's actually a question we would have to look into. So it, what we're talking about is vesting our possible estoppel and that requires a more detailed analysis from our office.
I, I can tell you, we've been on conversation on this management agreement with the city for probably two years. So I, you know, I'm a bit surprised to hear issues now, but simply all we're doing is implementing a condition of approval like every other project in the city does, so.
I've got some more comments. Entire agreement modification under the, under the contract. This agreement constitutes the entire agreement, the parties pertaining to the subject matter contained, and it supersedes all prior agreements. So are you saying there was a prior agreement to this?
No, there's no, there's no.
So my understanding is this is a new agreement. If we approve this, according to this language attorney, this is a new agreement as of tonight that this council will be responsible for approving. Is that correct?
That, that's correct. If there's no prior agreement, then this would be a new agreement that would still need to go to LAFCO.
Thank you. Modification and design. The parties acknowledge and agree to the following city approvals, the design may need to be modified based on force major, a change in law or discovery. So if we were, or the county, let's say, were to change the zoning and to make it uh, not senior housing, make it all single family, or the state were to change the laws, this is telling us that the design could be changed? Is that true?
I can tell you, we have approvals from the San Benito County of an approved specific plan. Any changes at that specific plan would have to go back to the, to the county of San Benito. We're not changing anything.
So you have an approval from the Planning Commission of San Benito?
Yeah, we have an approved specific plan. We have an approved development agreement. We have everything.
Not from the City of Hollister?
We have an agreement where the City of Hollister agreed to treat the fluent, the wastewater for this project. And what's before you tonight is a maintenance and communication agreement, so.
It's a bit concerning to me because we're looking at over a thousand homes out in the county. It sounds like it's another Santana Ranch deal to me, potentially, right? We're talking a thousand that are going to tap into our city sewer services.
I understand, but your master plans and sewer plans have already contemplated taking this wastewater. This is, this is nothing new. This has been in place for eight years. So I, yes, it's, it's a thousand units, but it's not, it's been contemplated. It was contemplated in secret.
It's nothing new, but it's a new agreement according to our city attorney. I just don't feel comfortable.
I, I'm not going to say that I agree with your city attorney. I'd be more than happy to get our council involved. Um, so I, I just want to make it clear. It might be a maintenance agreement and you're talking about a new agreement, but the commitment, the commitment to serve and treat this project was made by both the city council and LAFCO. If, if the city wants us to move forward without having a maintenance and communication agreement, I don't think that's the right thing to do, but.
Okay, I, I see that we have some people coming up to speak. I don't have any more questions. Thank you. Again, I'm disappointed to see it on the consent and that uh, Daisy was assigned to, to talk about this tonight. Thank you.
Do we have any other council members that'd like to speak? Yes.
Wait, let me see. I can see.
Yeah, please. Thank you. Appreciate it. No, you're in a difficult spot. So um, thank you, Mayor. So um, I want to get into a couple of other questions, um, but I do think that I would, I, I'm not, I'm not prepared to move forward with this tonight. I'm just going to put that out there. I think I would like to see a really clear legal analysis and I understand the frustration on both ends on this. I've been on the council two years. This, this is, I recall is the first time I'm hearing anything about this. And, and I also caution or question the way this came through as a consent item. And, and so I, I absolutely would like a, a extensive legal analysis and I don't know, maybe um, I'll, I'll trust in the attorney whether or not this needs to be a closed session discussion at some point. But back to the staff report itself, uh, Mr. Miller, it talks about a four-point-five million dollar uh, uh, benefit in impact fees plus monthly charges on metered flow, correct? How, was that four-point-five million dollars recently established or was that eight years or?
No, it was current.
Okay, and how was that established?
And based on, on the agreement that was from previous council, when they, so when they hook up to our sewer, sewer system, that they will pay their impact fee.
So, so, so how, again, I think that's a time thing that's really confusing to me. So this is four, four-point-five million dollars in twenty-twenty-three dollars versus twenty-fifteen dollars?
Correct.
All right. And, and so um, is there, is, is all the flow going to be metered or will there be some that will be not metered? Because in the, in the, in the staff report, it talks about plus a monthly charge on metered flow.
Yeah, it's, all, all aspects of it will be, go, go through a meter and that's what they'll be charged.
Okay. And so um, is there, is, is there an inflator factored into, uh, on a yearly basis to, to know what that's going to rise? I doubt that it's going to go down, but maybe our rates will go down as a result of this?
Correct. Our rates, I mean, as we pay down our bonds, the rates, we've been able to uh, lower our rates, but there's, with inflation currently, that, you know, that could offset, set those uh, decreases by the bond payments. But the, I mean, it's, well, depending on when our rates go up or down, that's when their rates will go up and down.
Okay. Do we, do we know, i- if we're going to receive four-point-five million dollars in twenty-twenty-three money for this, if, if, if it gets approved at some point in the next year? How much does it cost us to process all this? I mean, you know, this, this seems like a pretty good number to me, but, but I know it's, there's no free lunch.
Right, I mean, yeah, I mean, to process the payment, it's, it's fairly easy.
Yeah, I get that piece, but, but I mean, obviously, there's a cost to, to, to processing the, the waste as well.
Oh, we're, correct, but that's what they're, that's what's in their monthly fee is the, is that process.
I would if you could, sure.
So I mean, I think there's, there's multiple revenue sources for the city based on this. The first one is I, I'm assuming I didn't write the staff report, that the four million is basically based on whatever the sewer connection fee is per unit. And I think it was based on, I'm assuming today's fee. You guys raise your fee every July, so let's say we go pull the, pull a building permit in twenty-twenty-five, we're going to pay the fee that's in place as of two thousand twenty-five. So that's the one capacity, just simply the impact fee, right? So that will, that will be in current dollars whenever the, the building permit gets, gets paid. The other component of is that we actually, we have a metered flow, just like any house, any commercial building, anything. And there's a rate for the amount of flow that we produce. And again, that is dictated by the city on an annual basis. And whatever the rate is, whenever we provide flow on a monthly basis, that's what it gets paid at. So there is no indexing from a two thousand fifteen date. It's basically, you're going to, we're going to pay the fees when we pay the building permit at whatever the fee is at that date. And we are going to be charged, just like everybody else in the city, for using the service, depending, based on whatever the, the water flow, wastewater flow um, prices are monthly at that, at that time of, of, of using the system. So just, I, I hopefully that.
Right.
Clarify that.
It was helpful. Thank you. Appreciate it.
And a little bit of a clarification is, they own their sewer lines, so that we are not charging them a collection fee which is built in for residents of the, of Hollister. There's a collection fee and a treatment fee that is calculated to come up with the monthly sewer rate. So they will not be paying that collection fee.
Okay. And, and when our wastewater treatment plant was built, it was built more with a regional intent?
Correct.
Okay, and, and, and I, I know we're going to be taking on some of the city of San Juan Batista as well.
Correct.
And, and so what, are you able to forecast approximately on eleven hundred homes what, what that capacity is going to be and what, what, where does that give? One of my concerns is, it, it seems from what I recall, there's a lot of capacity.
Correct.
But, but we're also trying to build something that as the city of Hollister grows out, it will accommodate that too. And so.
Correct. So just, uh, this will be roughly eleven percent of our capacity, of our current capacity. However, we need to do, add like another, it's called a train to our wastewater treatment facility. It could handle, uh, I forget what the, the increase is, but it can, can handle a, a significant amount more wastewater.
Okay.
The other, the, the treatment plant was designed for expansion.
Okay. All right, and, and I guess my last question is again, part of the legal question I have. And so on page one fifty-one under ten dot two, which is uh, titled termination, uh, it, it pretty much says that um, the, the agreement uh, requires a mutual agreement to terminate this. And so if, if that's in fact the case, if one, one party or the other doesn't agree, where does that leave us? I, I think I know the answer, but again, I'm going to trust in our competency of our attorneys. Thank you.
If one party doesn't agree, then you're still, you still have the agreement. It's still enforceable.
Okay. And, and so if we then were the, the party that didn't want to continue the relationship, it would end up in litigation?
Most likely.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Uh, thank you, Mayor. That's all my questions and comments.
Do you have any questions?
Yeah, my question is, um, are the items that are in the, in our packet reviewed to form a legality by our city attorney's office?
Yeah, we review them.
Okay. I guess I'm wondering why these questions weren't flagged for us earlier if, if we have a lot of different types of concerns?
Well, it's difficult to anticipate all of the questions, like the termination provision. Um, I could do that in the future, like council, here's the independent contractor provision, termination provision. But what's helpful are the questions coming from council for us to then look at further.
I guess like the, the, the basic question of whether, you know, whether this agreement is even legal, whether LAFCO can actually do this, whether we, you know, I mean, those are significant questions that.
Right, right.
Looking at the various resolutions and prior approval, you know.
Whether LAFCO even has the authority to look at this agreement. Exactly. And, and the action by LAFCO previously back in two thousand fifteen, before any of us were here, was unusual because LAFCO typically only reviews agreements. And so that was puzzling. Um, and so I don't know what LAFCO is going to do with this when they receive the agreement.
I guess in the future, I'd just ask if there's um, questions on the validity of whether this is even something that we can do legally, that those be brought up and definitely not put these items on the set.
Councilmember Perez, do you have any thoughts, questions?
I um, I think this is going to have to be brought back um, to get a more, yeah, we need some more clarity here. It's very confusing, so to speak. The water is really muddy. But um, um, yeah, it's confusing. But, yeah, it's confusing, I, not that I don't support the San Juan Oaks tying into our line, it's just, I just want to see it more clarity.
Okay, the only comments I have, obviously very concerned about the legality. We, you know, LAFCO approves something and the council approves something and for years now, developer's been working on based on these, you know, it raises so many questions, so I'm, you know, and, and how does this impact other things like San Juan Batista, or, you know, they're okay to, forward, or is that, has that been approved? I mean, I, I would really like some direction on, on this, so I guess we will need to, to bring it back and get some input from you, city attorney.
Okay.
So I am assuming we don't have a motion then, so we.
I would ask that it be withdrawn and then.
Public comment.
Public comment, then after that, that we would withdraw it, so we can put it on once we have a determination.
So we have some public comment.
Mayor Casey, yes, we have one public comment from Carson Clower.
Thank you, council, I wasn't expecting to speak on this, but since I was one of the people who voted on it, it's probably a good idea for me to provide a little clarity. I have no affiliation with San Juan Oaks whatsoever, so if anybody said anything like that, it's not true. If you're going to have development that is at city density, it should be served by our water treatment facility. The city spent over $100 million in the early 2000s to put that in place. You have a wastewater and water master plan for the whole urban area that says that the effluent should go to that facility and should be processed there. It's what's best for the environment, it's what's best for the ratepayers. To me, it's not a super difficult thing to think about, that if you're going to have housing, it should go to the place that's the best, does the best job of processing it. I don't know when the change in LAFCO happened, it may have been an unusual thing looking at it, but it wasn't the only one. There was lots of these that went through. You have Sunnyside Estates, you have Santana Ranch, you have Sunny Slope Christian Center, which a more recent council approved, that's out of jurisdiction sewer service. You have 10 units at the migrant facility on South Side Road. So this is something that I believe is done, you have a deal, whether you like the deal or not, that's, you can't reneg on your contracts because you're going to have huge problems. They've got a lot of money into that site out there based off of the deal that was put in place. Going forward, the council has a big topic on their hands. You have, this is one of 10 different things associated with this specific problem. That, that sewer system should be servicing all housing density, any industrial, anything within the urban area needs to go to that facility. It makes sense for paying down your bonds, it makes sense for lowering your rates that your ratepayers pay every month. And it just, I get frustrated when I hear the talk about it because it's not a hard thing. The development's already approved, right? You have an operating agreement that's based off a condition of approval. The conditions of approval are when that's approved by the county, they ask for comment from the city. The city says, yes, if you do this, we can provide service. This is something that they were asked to do, they're bringing it to you. If you don't like the agreement, you may need to adjust the agreement. I don't think that you can actually just throw it out because it's a condition of approval that you asked to be placed, or we asked to, or somebody asked to be placed on their, on their approval. This is new now, but it's not really that new because you already service thousands of houses that are in the county that whether they should be or not, you're servicing them. Everybody's fine with using that money to pay down your, your, your bonds so that you can have lower rates. I'll be back to talk about it more, I mean, but don't just make this thing go away because it's not going to go away.
Thank you. So is there a motion?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, one last comment, you're right. Councilmember Clower, there are lots of projects that were proved in the past, doesn't necessarily mean they were done the right way. And in my opinion, the cost of having all those projects out in the county, the impacts that it has on our community far outweighs the $4.5 million that they're saying it's going to pay down the debt to pay off the sewer. With that, I will say that I move to withdraw.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Yes.
Motion carries. All right, so we have item seven?
Yeah, this item was brought to council to, to help facilitate my evaluation. I think, for you remember that last time, last evaluation took about six months and that, it wasn't work done during the six months because there were other items that's being gone, being done at the same time. But this is to help facilitate it and move it along more efficiently.
Councilmember Burns, was that your?
Yes, I did, thank you, Mayor, thank you, Mr. Miller. I did support the idea when it was brought to us. I'm not supportive now, I had, this is going to sound like peanuts compared to what we just were talking about, but, you know, not to exceed 6750, that just seems like a lot of money to do something that this council should take on themselves, I believe. And so for me, I will not be supporting this, this request, thank you.
Councilmember Resendez?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, I agree, I think that, that this needs to happen with the council sooner rather than later. In fact, I think that we should have a special meeting this week to have a meeting to do a review of the city manager, thank you.
Councilmember Perez, do you have anything to add, or Councilmember Morales? Councilmember Morales, anything to add? So is there a motion? Oh, I'm sorry, public comment.
There are no public comments for this item.
Madam Mayor, I move that we have a special meeting Wednesday at the earliest convenience, is that when we can do it, Madam Clerk?
Yes, that is correct, it does require 24 hours' notice.
That's my motion, to have a special meeting to review the contract of the city manager on Wednesday, thank you.
We need to resolve the actual item before us though, don't we, first, or look at?
There hasn't been a motion on the, on the item before you.
Okay, so we need to make a motion on that as well?
You may.
Or do we need to vote on this first, or?
There isn't currently a second to Councilmember Resendez's motion?
I, I have a point of clarification first, I guess. With regard to, my understanding is if there isn't a motion or the motion doesn't receive a second on the item, then the item dies for lack of action. And then how does that then, how does Councilmember Resendez's motion move from that?
Okay, so a couple of things we need to clear up. You have an item on there for approval of an agreement. That should be the item that's voted on right now. If you want another meeting or an agenda item, we need to get council consensus at the end of the meeting when you ask for these things. So my recommendation would be to withdraw the motion, focus on the current agenda item, and then ask for what you need during your comments and your ability to ask.
Very well, thank you. Madam Mayor, I move to withdraw my previous motion to have the special meeting, and then we can talk about that during the informational report. At this time, I'd move to withdraw the resolution 2023-18.
Is there a second for that motion?
Again, I'm, I'm kind of confused here. I, I thought in order, in order for it to go away, then there, if he doesn't receive a second, then it dies for lack of action, correct?
Well, that's correct, it just wasn't the proper time for that motion because the idea is that we want the public to be able to participate, right?
Right, right.
Yeah, so we need to focus on the actual noticed agenda item.
Right, all right, so then I won't make a second because I want it to go away.
Okay, so his, he withdrew his motion already, so there is no need for a second on that one. And then Councilmember Resendez made another motion to withdraw this agenda item, this contract.
So does that need a second then to withdraw it, or?
Yes.
Okay, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Yes.
All opposed? So abstentions, so.
I'll check with the city attorney, but my recollection is in the code, it states that any silence is counted as an affirmative vote.
Right, but you have Councilmember Perez that just voted yes.
So we have three, so the motion carries then, okay, so this item has been withdrawn. Okay, and you will bring up whatever later, okay, so let's go to item eight. We're going through the consent and I think that's later.
Good evening, Mayor and council members, the item before you is a resolution requesting to amend the expiration date on a reimbursement agreement for the Roberts Ranch subdivision. I'm here to answer any questions.
Who brought this item up?
I did, Mayor, I did, thank you, Mayor. Yeah, yes, how did we get here? As I read the staff report, it was, it was a bit confused. It sounded like there was mistakes made on both sides, or?
No, so there was a mistake on the drafting as far as the timing and the expiration date for the reimbursement agreement. The development had a subdivision improvement agreement that dictates when the project will be completed. So essentially, the reimbursement should have matched the expiration of the subdivision improvement agreement. But in this case, when it was drafted, it had a two-year expiration. So it didn't match the subdivision improvement agreement, so what we're trying to do is have it match the expiration of the subdivision improvement agreement since they already completed the work.
Okay, and how much money are we talking?
As of right now, they haven't submitted their final reimbursement, but there is language in the agreement that says that the city is only responsible for 50% of anything exceeding what the developer is required to, to construct.
So then if we approve this tonight, are we in essence writing a blank check?
No, so if this gets approved, essentially will be to approve what was already previously approved in 2018.
Which is how much?
As of right now, there is not a, a final estimate. It was, at the time of the approval, it was, there was an engineer's estimate for 1.2 million. The developer is required to pay 600,000 and some change. And then anything exceeding the 600,000 will be 50% the city and 50% the developer.
Okay, I hate to do this to the city attorney, but are, are you comfortable with this?
Yeah, my understanding is that it's fixing a typo, so you have conflicting provisions of what's going on here, and my recommendation would be to fix that typo.
Okay, perfect, thank you, that's all I had, Mayor.
Do we have any other comments or questions? So do we want to make a motion?
So moved.
I'm sorry, a public comment.
Unmoved.
Do we have public comment?
There are no public comments for this item.
Okay.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. All right, so now for public comment or public input, this is the time for anyone in the audience to speak on any item not on the agenda and within the subject matter jurisdiction of the council. Speaker cards are available in the lobby and are to be completed and given to the city clerk before speaking. When the city clerk calls your name, please come to the podium, state your name and city for the records and speak to the city council. If you're joining us via Zoom, please click on the bottom of your screen to raise your hand. If you're joining us via Zooms, using your cellphone, please press star nine. Each speaker will be limited to three minutes with a maximum of 30 minutes allowed per subject. Please note that state law prohibits the city council from discussing or taking action on any item not on the agenda. City clerk, do we have public comment?
Mayor Casey, yes, we do, the first speaker is Alejandro Seja.
Hello, this is my first time speaking up here. So my name is Alejandro Seja, I'm the owner of the food truck, El Guapos Kitchen. And the reason why I'm up here, I just wanted to, you know, bring you guys' attention to revise the ordinance for food trucks being within city limits. You know, it's something that my fellow colleagues and I have talked about, discussed, and I feel like it's only able to be brought up to attention within the numbers, right? Within all of us coming up to the city councilman, and hopefully we could discuss, you know, come together to an agreement, whether specifically not being in town, but just closer to city limits and just change the ordinance as well. And that's it, you know, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Our next speaker is Jason Ricketts.
Hello, city council, Mayor, my name is Jason Ricketts, I'm one of the owners of the Hoppa Bros. Food Truck. I'm here to echo a lot of the same stuff as my colleague. You know, we are fairly new food truck to the area and, you know, we found it's a bit unclear as to where we can open up. We have been able to be a part of the, the farmer's market as well as the holiday events, and so those have been great. But aside from that, especially during sort of the off-season, we found it's tough to sustain ourselves with sort of the public access points or areas where we can open up at the moment. So, yeah, we just love to see some clarity or some projects sort of geared towards maybe developing a, a food truck park or something of that nature, love to see that. I think it would help promote a lot of small businesses such as us, you know, to really grow. It can, can provide those sort of avenues for growth, so, yeah, thank you for hearing me and I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Joseph Elmhurst.
Hi, my name is Joseph Elmhurst, I'm a owner and operator of Steak Stop, another food truck here in town. Again, just saying what these guys have already said. I had the pleasure of meeting with Brett Miller about a week ago. We kind of discussed a couple of great ideas that might hold some merit that, that you guys would probably really enjoy. I was here about a year ago talking about a project that I really wanted to put together, but I ran into a lot of trouble when it came to environmental services and, you know, the, the, the enforcements and, and everything. So it, it died as quick as it started. And I think this is something that the community needs and the community really wants. And now's the time that we can make it happen. There's a lot of people that, that, that have the ability to kind of do this and, and you guys are them. I, I wish I could do it, but I, I can't without your guys' help, or we can't without your guys' help. And, and with everything that you guys have on your plates right now, you know, if, if we don't really tackle this right, right away, it's just going to get pushed down to the bottom of the stack and it's just not going to be discussed or, you know, it's, be looked over. And I don't think that, I, I think that we, we should move on something like this. Maybe what we could do is, is, is develop a, a small committee, you know, where the environmental services and somebody from the planning department is, you know, at the table so that we can discuss areas of where we could locate or where we could be or, or something to help, you know, kick the can a little bit further down the street. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Our next public speaker is Carson Clower.
Hi again, council, I'm just going to bring up the out of jurisdiction sewer service thing again, a little bit separate from the other item. I would suggest that in one way or another, you take up the idea as a whole in the near future, especially before you finalize any general plan. You have a lot of projects, you have the GAV, the GAV campus, you have the city of San Juan Batista who's asking for it. I believe Riverview Estates asked for it and got it. So you have this wide variety of projects and people that are asking for it, some people get it, some people don't. I don't necessarily think that's fair without having some sort of criteria as to the why. I represent somebody who lives in the county in a county pocket that's surrounded by city limits. He'd like to get rid of his septic tank, we have an application in, it's been in for about five months. We don't have any process on how to actually even get that before you. For one reason or another, it was done in the past, I don't know if it wasn't documented, but it, it's something that is being worked on, it was supposed to come before you, it got pulled. There's, it just needs your opinion on it more than anything. If you can't do anything out of jurisdiction, then you probably need to look at your sphere of influence and your city limits. Because there's areas that are not, that shouldn't have septic tanks that do. They're 60, 80 years old, even older, it's not good for the environment. So, I mean, you guys can pick and choose what type of projects you would allow this to happen for, but right now, there's no way to even get it to you to get your opinion on it. That's one thing. Secondly, I want to commend you guys' investment on the park up at Park Hill, on the softball diamond there, that's super exciting. A couple of months ago, I came before you guys at a special project review meeting regarding some senior housing that would be coming forward at some point. I'd like to invite Councilmember Perez and Mayor Casey out for a walk of the site. It is going to take some input, some imagination. It is going to take some input, some imagination from the city. So I also will reach out to a couple of staff members and hopefully get some people out there. Because as I mentioned in the previous meeting, you do have some right-of-way that you don't use realistically. It's not something that you're going to be using anytime in the future. So there would have to be some negotiation along the way, I'm sure, and I think it can happen. But just to avoid any Brown Act issues, that's why I'm inviting the two of you. So I'll reach out this week for that, penciling the 17th if we possibly can. And once again, the property owner will be much appreciated with any input that you can provide. Thanks so much.
Thank you.
The next public speaker we have is Carol Lenore.
Oh, boy. Hello, my city leaders. It's nice to see you all up there. Well, Carson, I'll have to agree with you. Some of those properties should not have gotten out of boundary service. So I couldn't help but say that. It's a really sticky issue you've got there. It's kind of evolved into, we want it and you're going to give it. They come up here to talk about that, but I could talk about that for a long time, about that whole process and why it's the way it is. And as far as I know, the out-of-boundary service request, city engineering was always the lead bringing that forward. So I don't know what happened to that process since the last time I was involved with it. Anyway, I would like the city to put out a notice to all the landscapers that are landscaping in the city and ask them to please, when you blow your clients' leaves and grass and mostly leaves into the, and sometimes those tree branches into the gutter, it goes to the storm drain. This is something that's very concerning of public works. It just makes a whole host of problems. And I see it. I don't like it. They're blowing it out and then they drive off. Not on my block, because I'll chase them and ask them to pick your stuff up. Don't be lazy. Take it away like you're supposed to. Never supposed to be left with a storm drain. If we could work on that, I'd have one less thing irritating me. Thank you and have a nice evening.
Thank you.
Mayor Casey, that's all of the public comments.
Okay. So we'll go to item D1, city manager report.
Yes, as councilor remembers, councilmember Burns brought back an item for staff to look at for food trucks. Staff is working on the food truck, trying to come up with a solution on that situation. For that out-of-jurisdiction, one of the issues that we've been waiting on is our new LAFCO director. The new LAFCO, either one was chosen, but we're still waiting on that person to show up. And then, Carol, I don't mind talking to Code about landscapers because they are not supposed to be blowing that into the streets. So I will talk to the chief about that. And that's all I have to report. And for D2, the chief has something.
Yes, Mayor, members of the council. We had, one, two, three. Seven officers attended CIT training since the last city council meeting that we've had. Some in January and some early this month. They're actually in the training. Two of our sergeants went to driver instructor school. There's now a new requirement. There's a post-training that's not available for us anymore, so we have to do behind-the-wheel training for vehicles. And we sent two instructors to be trained to trainer, so they're going to be our instructors so we can do all that training in-house. I also attended a conference for Exxon, which is a major provider for body cameras and other tasers and other vehicle cameras. And that's something that we're going to be bringing up on the council meeting, special meeting about future projects. There's going to be a need for us to look into a different kind of system since the one we're using right now was bought out by another company and is no longer supported. And we also had several officers doing their annual firearms training here locally. And that's it. Thank you.
Any other? Then I guess we'll move on to item F1?
We already did that one, F2.
Oh, I'm sorry. We did. Let's go to F2 then.
Good evening, mayor, members of the council, David Marioni, assistant city manager. I'm here tonight to present to you a concept that we'd like to go out to RFP and see what services are available and out there. And what this is in response to is disaster response and recovery services with disaster-related debris service included. So as you may know, we just recently went through, you know, the floods and were dealing with that. We had the good fortune within the city to have relatively low impact. But our neighbors in the county will be dealing with the cleanup of, you know, from the flood for quite some time. For the imminent threat of someday having a large-scale earthquake, I can remember when we had the 1989 earthquake and the debris and rubble all throughout the city. Folks sleeping in Dunn Park and, you know, the response of the community was amazing. But that was, you know, 33 years ago. And, you know, it's, you never know when, right? There's, with weather events, we have a little bit of notice. With an earthquake, we typically have none or a few seconds, right? And so one of the services that other communities look to is a disaster debris cleanup. And what happens is, and there's different models out there. So we're seeking an RFP to look for different vendors. In most cases, we'd probably make recommendations for multiple. You always want to, you know, have some redundancy in your disaster response. But what we would look for is, some of these companies actually do a reimbursement model where once a national or state emergency is declared, they'll bring folks in on-site within, you know, eight hours, 16 hours to start facilitating the cleanup efforts. With an earthquake, you could have debris in the streets. We could have broken pipes. We could have a loss of power, water, gas, all of the above. And so oftentimes, you know, with an earthquake, it could also impact our staff personally, right? We may have staff that unfortunately are in a position that their homes could have been impacted or possibly lost. With an earthquake, as we saw in the past, it won't, you know, a major earthquake will not just be isolated to the city of Hollister. So you're in a, you know, if we remember back to Loma Prieta, we were all the way from Watsonville up to the Bay Area. And so those resources, I mean, if we feel our resources would be stretched thin, the surrounding resources would be stretched thin as well. What these companies do, what they specialize in is, you know, after you sign a contract, they typically will go under contract with various construction companies, all kinds of different, I mean, ranchers for debris staging, all of those types of things. They'll go under contract with them in a just-in-case manner. And by going with larger-scale companies, they may have contracts with folks in the Central Valley. A construction company in the Central Valley may be in a position to bring their equipment over and assist with the cleanup. Many of the, if we go back to Loma Prieta, many of the buildings that came down were right, you know, surrounding us. And they were very old buildings. And those buildings are often, you know, have asbestos, maybe mercury, it could be lead paint. You know, who knows what you're remediating? You can't just scoop all of that up and haul it off to the dump. There's a whole disaster, you know, there's a whole debris staging that goes into it that, you know, is very complex. What some firms do as well is provide sheltering services, right? So, you know, we were fortunate enough to support the county with the Veterans Hall and then, you know, for the one day out at the community center. The community center, the capacity was 40. You know, at the Vets Hall, we were able to stage the folks that were there. But, you know, that wouldn't suffice probably if we had a major-scale earthquake. That's when you start tapping into your high school gyms and your school gyms and all the different facilities that are out there. What some of these firms will do is actually come in with cots, shelters, pop-up tents, fully powered, fully ready-to-go, bring in meals, the whole nine yards. Some firms specialize in one piece, some focus in all. And then the other piece is, is you could have local contractors that are interested in providing those services as well. So what we'd like to do is issue an RFP and see what services are available out there. And then depending on if they are, you know, some may be a no-cost contract that are reimbursed through the FEMA process. So there are some that will actually help you manage that process and submit, help you to submit your FEMA claim. And then you get reimbursed that way. And one of the challenges is with FEMA is that typically your staff that are working on FEMA claims, it's often their first time, maybe their second time if they've, you know, been with a municipal agency for a long time. You really don't want staff that have worked on 10, 15 FEMA claims because then that means you've been dealing with a lot of disasters, right? Well, as these firms basically go throughout the country, that is the business model, is to work with the agencies to help them document, get the paperwork correct from the first time. What often happens is, is, you know, there's a disaster, there's a mindset of, we got to just get it done, and FEMA will take care of the rest, right? FEMA will reimburse it. I think we've seen with the, just even with the county's response. You know, FEMA comes out, they're looking, they said, nope, there's not enough damage for individual assistance. There's a public assistance and individual. Public is your nonprofits and your government agencies. Individual is, you know, the providing for someone who's lost their home directly as an individual. Gets a little confusing when they say public, but that's really the delineator. And so what ends up happening often is that you may be making these purchases in an emotional state. And by the time you submit and FEMA starts going through your claim, then those, you know, that, they go through each line item purchase. You know, with COVID, you may have purchased signs for the, that said, "Social distancing only." They want to know where you stuck the sign, right? So you have a claim that says, you know, I've ordered 15 signs. What doors did you stick those on? I don't, you know, you may not remember. You were putting them up everywhere. Well, unless you have that documentation, they'll come back and say, no, that line item is denied. And so what we want to do is just in, to, you know, better prepare the city, is to go out to RFP and see what feedback we get and what firms are out there. And then ultimately, bring it back for discussion.
Thank you. Do we have questions from council?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you for that presentation. I'm going to just assume you came from a different city that had done something like this before. You've got some experience with this. Is that something that's safe to assume?
Very close.
Okay.
So I was working prior to in Merced County. We were going through a similar process. They unfortunately were impacted very severely by the floods and were in that process. So what happens if you do not have it fully procured is that, one, you can go through, you know, FEMA is going to look for reasons to deny the claim. So if you haven't fully procured, then they can say, well, you didn't follow the procurement process. We're not going to allow federal funds to go towards it. If that's the case, then Cal OES has to step in and conduct your RFP right there in an emergency basis. And they may get who they get right then and there. So we're trying to have that set up prior to.
Yeah, and then I would imagine you're going to come back with the RFP.
Correct.
For us to adopt it.
We will come back.
I think this is fantastic. I think this has been getting ahead of it, being proactive. We need to be more proactive rather than reactive, so I 100% support this. Thank you for bringing it forward to us. I'd like to see more of this type, this type of services if we can. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other councilmembers?
Thank you. I agree. I think this is great to be proactive in this regard. Maybe a technical question. When an event like that happens, is that a prevailing wage discussion as well? If we contract with somebody, I mean, for the public good?
I would have to look into that. I don't want to declare it one way or another. It's probably, I would assume so, but we will look into that.
Okay.
I'll work with Mary to confirm.
Because that could be nightmarish after the fact. Also, I think there's even a bigger conversation though about disaster service workers for the city and everybody that works for the city as I understand it is one. And so I don't know that I've actually seen any kind of city policy. And so it may exist. I'm just not aware of it. But I would love to see that because if it happened once, it could happen again, and it's not if, it's just when. And so I think, you know, the administration and certainly the elected officials have a responsibility to ensure that it's prudent, it's manageable. And so, again, congratulations. I think this is a great idea. Thank you.
Councilmember Morales?
Thank you. Wonderful presentation. I also want to add that there's a lot of costs that we could get reimbursed for, like any meetings, any communication. Related to that, we can get reimbursed staff time. So having somebody that is knowledgeable and knows how to implement the policies and the procedures to be able to collect this information during those stressful times is key. So thank you for doing that.
Yeah, we have very strong support with fire and PD on all of the FEMA claims and the, you know, the documentation. They call it a ICS 214 form. And even at the beginning of the floods when we didn't know what it was going to be, they were all tracking their time appropriately.
Councilmember Perez?
Good job. Yeah, I love your heart for the emergency response that we provided with the help of the county. Also, looking for the future of how to alleviate some of those stressful issues for our clients, our constituents. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good job. I think this is wonderful, being proactive, given that we're in earthquake country, floods, fires. Having a plan in place is going to be really important. So thank you for bringing it forward. And I agree with councilmember Burns about disaster workers and understanding their roles because I get the sense, I know when we had the county response, I got the sense there wasn't a good understanding with some county workers as to what their role as a disaster worker. So I'd really like us to be clear about that, so. But otherwise, great.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have?
Public comment.
Public comment?
Mayor Casey, we do not have any public comments for this item.
Okay, so do we have a motion then to approve this?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Alright, item three. We have the staff report. You again, David.
Yeah, I should have brought both folders. I apologize. Okay, so today's item that's in front of you is a resolution authorizing the city manager to make changes to the low-interest business loan program. And so just by way of brief history, the item, on May 2nd, staff received direction to create the low-interest business program. What the guidelines at that time were a 15-year, 2% simple interest rate loan program for the development of new businesses in the downtown area with up to $2 million available to be used towards individual loans. So the whole pot was $2 million. The loan amounts varied on the type of business. So a restaurant with a commercial kitchen would qualify for 150,000. Retail type, retail or restaurant type of business that did not have a commercial kitchen would qualify for 150,000 towards their ADA improvements. And so a loan approval board was developed as part of the program. To date, we've received four complete applications. One program or one loan application has been funded. One was ineligible based on the current rules. And two were eligible, but we're seeking additional funding outside of the amounts on the program. So if they were comfortable with the current amount, we could have went forward. They wanted to seek more, and we had some public comment regarding that. So in full disclosure, because we were taking possible changes, we did reach out to both applicants that had a qualified application to say, you know, we will be discussing additional changes. So we want to at least let you know, if you want to move forward with that loan application as it stands, you can. Or, you know, if the program changes tonight, the program changes tonight. We have to review it under that. One has said they wanted to proceed, and so we're finalizing that with them, and the other we did not hear back from. So on October 3rd, staff provided the council with a report on the program. And that's where, you know, Daisy had come back and...
And that's where, you know, we, uh, Daisy had come back and, and reported on the, the, the lower amount of applications that were in the, uh, that, that we had received. There was also a question about, um, you know, lar, uh, larger loan amounts for the property owner, if they own the business and the property. And so at that time, um, council had indicated that they would consider applications where, um, where, where on a case by case for a larger loan, where that, those conditions were met, where it was a business owner and the property owner. Additionally, we were given direction to, uh, come back at a later date with, uh, recommended changes to the program because it seemed like, um, folks were having a hard time applying for the program. It was tight parameters and sometimes, you know, after reviewing the initial progress, take a step back and reevaluate. And so, uh, in front of you today is, um, a handful of potential changes for your discussion. And so, um, the first would be to make this program available to any business with a publicly accessible physical location in the downtown district. Okay, so, you know, we had, um, contingencies around whether there was the commercial kitchen or not. Just basically, if you have a, a storefront, if you have a physical location in the downtown district, then you would be eligible. Um, going with the spirit of, of council and the, and the meeting on October 3rd, increasing the maximum loan amount from 150,000 to 300,000 for business owners that, uh, also own the property where the qualified business is located. And then applicants could receive that additional 50,000 in a loan to be used solely for ADA upgrades. So basically parsing those out. The interest rate, uh, would increase from 2% to 4% uh, based on current market conditions. Uh, like I said before, this, this program was developed about eight months ago and, uh, rates have changed significantly. Um, we do have in here that the application period ends, um, February 28th at 4:00 PM and, and applications would be reviewed in March. Um, depending on how, uh, the changes that we make tonight, uh, staff would like to maybe bump that out a little bit to, uh, February 27th through March 31st. Because we could have, uh, significant changes or changes that would require changes to the application. Um, right now, everything is, uh, paper-based. And, um, that would also give us time to put together a quick, uh, web application for folks to, to complete and upload their documents as well. Um, additionally, the loans would be reviewed by the loan approval board and that final amount would be approved by the loan approval board. Um, and so the idea there is, is, you know, we, we've had limited applications because of the tight parameters of the program. So if we adjust this out, then we could anticipate that we would have many more applications, right? And so in that case, what we would do is gather the applications during the application period and then do a review. And then depending on the need of the business and their ability to, um, pay the loan back, you know, after going through all the documents that were required as part of the guidelines, then the loan board would make recommendations back. So you could have in a, a scenario where someone asked for 150,000 and the loan board comes back and says it's $100,000, right? And that's typical with, with many loans. Um, and then, uh, the decisions of that loan approval board would not be appealable. And they would not, the, the loan applications would not come before the council. So what we're looking for is the council to set the policy. We agree on what it is and then you, and, you know, then the, the board reviews those applications. Um, the board would be comprised of city staff and, uh, financial, uh, folks from, uh, finance, local financial institutions here that would not have a, a stake in the loan itself. And so with that, um, everything else, we're not looking to change the term of the contract or the way that the interest is accrued. Um, and with that, um, I'll pause and take questions and take feedback and, uh, go from there.
Do we have any questions? Councilmember Burns?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Um, you covered the one about who the board was and I appreciate that. Have, have we looked at other communities? I think this is a, a, a great idea and I think it's a really good use of the ARP money that we've set aside for this. But I'm concerned that we haven't really gotten a whole lot of momentum with this. And so, um, I have to assume other communities have done like things. Have we? Can we figure out where, where we may have misstepped or not stepped and they made a step in the right direction?
Well, um, in the loans that I've been, you know, uh, familiar with, we were very constrained to where it was a brand new business that was a restaurant with a commercial kitchen. So naturally, by the available property in the city, you're gonna limit the amount of people. Then you have to depend on those people knowing about the program, right? And so that just shrinks it down. So I think that's where the main challenge lies. Um, typically, the loan programs would not only be for new businesses, but for expansion or, you know, increase, you know, a new, new equipment to make them more profitable or to step up. And, you know, my machine can only handle 500 widgets a day and now we want, we've got demand to go to 1,000, but I can't purchase the equipment, right, to, to meet the demand. Typically, that's where, where those typically are. So I think we, we, we're just, the initial concept was to spur more downtown restaurants coming to town, right?
Right. And, and so under the current or the revised program, was it, was it still only for the downtown area?
It would be for the downtown district. That is correct.
I would actually like us to, I, I think it's great, but I'd like to expand the parameters to any commercial, you know, whether it be a restaurant or any other business in, in any of our other, uh, uh, commercial areas throughout the city. I think it, it may give us a greater opportunity to, uh, expand the outcomes. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Rosales.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, so I, I completely agree with everything that you've said. Thank you for your suggestions. Um, I'm not opposed to what Councilmember Burns is suggesting. Maybe we should do that so that we can get more applications. I would just say, um, heavy emphasis on the outreach, especially with the downtown business owners. And then if it does, like if we do open the floodgates and then you do get overwhelmed or you don't have enough funding, just come back and let us know so that we can reassess at that time. But I'm not opposed to opening it to the entire city. But again, how are we, how are we outreach to these businesses, um, to let them know that we have availability? And then I would assume that, well, we really haven't talked to everybody because they weren't actually available for it at that time, right? So how did you outreach to the existing ones?
Yeah, so city staff partnered with the Hollister Downtown Association. And again, that's where the challenge lies, is is a brand new business going to join an association before they're up and open, right? Or are they gonna use those, they may not know that exists yet, right? So I think it was, you know, a little bit of the challenge there. I mean, we did share it through the chamber and EDC and all of our partners that, that pass that information along, but, um,
So I would suggest more like of a social media presence, more of a, uh, Bonita link and face, what is it, uh, the other one? Hollister Freelance. Um, so you don't have to be like a member of something. That would be my suggestion. And just go old school door to door with flyers, you know, let people know, talk to them. We've gotta get people to the ad hoc anyhow, so.
Okay.
Thanks.
Councilmember Morales.
Um, so thank you for your presentation. A job well done. I think I'm a little frustrated because when we first started this program, um, we knew, we had a lot of community members show up saying, these restrictions are, are, we can't use it, we need help. We had several, um, we had the, I forgot their name, but the Joe family come in saying like, we're waiting for this part, it's not enough, it's contingent upon XYZ. And so a lot of community members really laid out all the challenges. I think not only did they come to city council, but then in our, was it, uh, rally, community business meeting, they also presented a variety of different challenges with this loan. So we came back to city council and directed staff to modify this a long time ago. I wanna say.
It was October 3rd.
October 3rd. Yeah, so we, we'd asked for that direction. I thought that that, those changes were already made and we're coming back to kind of expand based on new challengers or, or a, additional things that there needed direction on. Um, so I'm just concerned that if we, if we lay out the plans, if we lay out the challenges, if we have community members sharing their concerns, if we have businesses still waiting for, for this. This is supposed to help out our community as part of the COVID relief and we're still not there yet. We have one business that actually had a loan finalized. To me, that's, that's a a failure on our part. Um, so first, uh, I, I'd like to see these changes happen immediately. I don't know why we're waiting so long. Second, I think if we're doing any type of, um, interest rate, we should stay at 2%, if not lower it to even one or 1.5. A lot of other jurisdictions are doing grants, so they're just pretty much allowing the community to be able to reinvest in their, in themselves and they're having them apply. So in other jurisdictions, they've already gone through like six versions of this and we're not even done with our first. So, um, I wanna see this move a lot faster and I like at least at every council meeting with updates on this. So disappointed, to say the least. Not, not on you. You did great job, but just in terms of the process.
Councilmember Perez.
This, this sounds, it's all, it sounds great and, um, I know, I know personally that we'll probably have some speakers that'll stand up and say that this process is taking too long. Um, yeah, it's, um, I'm glad that we're moving forward with this and, and I'd like to see this implemented as soon as possible also. Um, as far as the interest rate, I think 2% is good. Yeah.
Um, I would agree about the interest rate. I'd like to see it stay at 2%. I know there's inflation and other things going on, but since this is funding to help the businesses. Um, and can you clarify for us now, you, you mentioned that there's another, uh, business that has actually gone through and is, is in the approval process or?
Correct.
So we have two now, so.
That is correct.
And, uh,
They have not, they have not signed on the dotted line, but we did give the opportunity.
It's just the.
Correct.
Okay, okay, that's.
We felt it was only fair to say, you know, you were asking for more than the current guidelines. So staff can't just go above and beyond.
Sure.
And so that's a, you know.
Understood.
You have to make that decision and, you know, we felt it would be unfair to put them into a pool, right, when they were eligible and had gone through.
Let's see. Um, I do recognize how difficult when you have a business starting up, they, they aren't connected with all of the usual suspects that you use to get word out to businesses. So, um, again, the, the mention of doing Bonita link and freelance and even just businesses that are, you know, they go through that whole fictitious business process that's in the freelance that's published, uh, we could be proactive in, in sort of getting that out to them. You know, the potential. So just whatever we can do to really spread the word would be valuable. So, so only comments I have.
Yes.
What staff member was in charge of this program? Wasn't you. You weren't here.
No, it was this, uh, myself and Daisy. I mean, remember when we first, uh, brought this program to you, we, uh, recommended a grant program and then council put the parameters in that, that were the 50 for the ADA, 50 for a retail and 150 for, um, for a, a kitchen.
Yeah, I just, I, I remember all of that. I was just wondering what staff member was in charge of it. That's all. Thank you.
Sure.
Any other? Councilmember Perez? Did you, you look like you have a question?
I did.
Uh-oh.
Um, yeah, and I probably still do have it someplace.
I just have one more comment. So one of the things I had, when we were talking about this program, I had spoken with Brett. And one of the things that I thought was interesting, and maybe you are doing it already, but the idea of they're paying interest, that money goes back into the program. So we could even create this as a revolving program that would be sustaining, not just a one-time thing where the money goes out and that's it. So is that, are we doing that or is that something we could do?
That was the intent of the program by council.
Okay.
I remembered. Yeah, the, as far as just the downtown business, I know that originally it seemed like we just wanted to help the downtown. But I think, I do feel like we are leaving out the, the rest of the city. Yeah, I wouldn't mind opening it all up.
So if there's, uh, no more comments, then can we go to public comment?
Mayor Casey, our first public comment is from Edgar Mayer.
Um, good evening, uh, council members. I, I'm a little frustrated with this, um, application process. I did the application since May, since it started. I believe that the application you guys are talking about is us, Cafe Con Leche. Um, I wanna ask him, in the beginning, you stated that, um, the rules in, in, right? So 150 for a commercial kitchen, right? So a coffee shop, I'm paying permits for a commercial kitchen. Environmental health, legally, I'm, I'm commercial kitchen. I have a kitchen in the back of my, of my, of the place. But now, on the process, on all this process that it has been taking almost a year, they tell me, you're not eligible to have 150 because you're not a commercial kitchen. But if you go to environmental health and you, and you ask and pull my permit, I am a commercial kitchen. I'm a coffee shop. I provide food, I provide drinks. Now, with all this, you guys gave the council members, or I don't know, 4.25 million to the Hollister Farms developer to keep project alive. Now you guys are willing to go ahead and put that money in there in the shopping center with all that big corporations, big owners and everything. But it's taking so long for the small businesses to rise up. You know, I, I'm, I'm, I'm a little frustrated because 150 for you guys is nothing, but for us is something that we could put a parklet outside, a coffee roaster to build a business, you know, something. We have even people coming from Morgan Hill, San Jose, just to look at the shop. You know, just to look at there, just to have a drink and feel the vibe of the, of the coffee shop. And then for this to take too long, my family and I, we hurting, you know? And I understand, we barely new here, we been here three years, but we made Hollister a home. We love Hollister. We love you guys. We're here almost all the time. So I wish, I hope that you guys could go ahead and take my application, review the business plan, review everything. And for the money that we're asking, it's not a lot. And if you see the money that we're bringing in on the profit, on the, on the balance sheet, on everything that I provided, you guys see that we could go ahead and pay this. And this process is taking too long. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, Mayor, just for clarification, this is brought up, uh, at past council meetings. The definition for us, for a commercial kitchen was bringing in a stove with a hood system because that was so expensive. So I just wanna put that clarification out there.
The next public comment is from Samantha Perez.
Hello, everyone. This is actually my first time attending one of these meetings and I just would like to introduce myself to you all. My name is Samantha Perez and my family and I moved to Hollister about, almost two years ago from San Jose. And I have a women's jewelry business and I turned in my application, I wanna say, almost a month ago. I am not a new business. I'm an existing business that solely ran online. And I took a chance on Hollister and opened up my own studio on San Benito Street. Um, so I applied to this small business loan and I'm really hoping that you guys consider opening it to existing businesses. Thank you.
Those are all the public comments we have for this item.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, I'm, I'm just curious. So how many existing applications do you have in process? You've got one that was approved. We heard from another one that is potentially gonna be approved. And then how many other applications do we have in the process right now?
The two you just heard from.
Okay.
So we have a total of four.
So.
Two that you just heard from.
Do, so my second question is, do they all have parklets?
No. Oh, not all of them. No, not at all.
How many of those do not have a parklet?
One.
How much does it cost for us?
Oh, how many do not have a parklet?
Yeah.
Three do not have a parklet.
How much does it cost for us to get them a parklet? I know we did that for one business recently. How much is one parklet?
Uh, I believe that the current cost is about 20,000.
Mm-hmm.
It sounds like they might consider using some of this money for a parklet just in operating in good faith, them having gone through the process, sticking it out. I would say maybe we can help them out with that cost on top of what they're already getting. It sounds like it's fair. If the council would consider adopting that as part of the resolution. If the council would consider adopting that as part of the resolution. Thank you.
I have a question about that.
Yeah, the only thing we got to check for, you know, because that where that is, we just have to make sure it's it's safe. That's the issue.
I know where their business is and I know that another business is there opening up next door to them and I think that we need to, we need to start promoting these businesses, we need to start getting some more traffic. These guys work really hard to get a social media following. They want to bring people to Hollister, we have to create that ambiance and that vibe, so whatever we need to do to get parklets and to ensure that they're safe. I say we do it and if we have to bring it back as a resolution to adopt something, then let's do that because I think they've been a huge success and we need to continue pushing forward with that.
I have a question about that. I guess I I'm not as familiar with as everyone with the parklet program, but I thought it was just for the downtown corridor.
It's for the the downtown area. We have a section that is lined up. I have to find out exactly if that is within that area, but it's. My understanding it is.
It's twelve blocks.
Okay, that's mine.
Yeah. They are in the they are in the district.
Yeah, it's just the side streets.
Do we have any other?
Thank you, mayor. I just want to say I would support Vice Mayor Morales's recommendation. Maybe that we could get a a council meeting report, every council meeting on just where we're at on this. It's just like we we have to find a a path forward and and hopefully with what you're proposing, that'll get us to where we need to be, but sooner than later, please.
I'd be happy to.
I forgot, I do support the two percent. I've heard that a couple of times, but I do, I'm totally on board with that as well. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
I'd like to express too a little bit of my concern and frustration of why it taking so long also. You know, I drink coffee there sometimes. It gets me too wired. The um, but um, yeah, I I personally see the. The challenges that they're facing, not just them, but in Churros and stuff like that and, you know, the. Knowing some of the history and how this this family started this in the in the pandemic, you know, it's like it's. These are the the heart and the courage that you guys have to keep pushing forward, you know, through it all. It's like, man, if I had a hat, I'd take it off to you. And and Churros too, you know. Yes, and so anything we can do to to expedite this, I. I would really appreciate it.
That Councilmember Morales.
So I just want to go back to staff's recommendation, so the first line is available to any business. Location downtown district, I would like to expand it to the city of Hollister given. And be given priority to the downtown district, but make sure that it's open to everyone. I think the second item is fine, the third is fine, the fourth, interest rate, two percent. Like to extend the application period if possible. I would like on the second to last item, decisions of the loan approval board are not appealable. I like. There an opportunity for there to be a review process. Otherwise, we are going to have the city council be that kind of a appellate and we'll hear kind of the. The items like the kitchen and be able to, I would like to be able to have a second layer before it comes to council. So that there's a review.
May I ask a clarifying question? If we do a longer period, would the council be opposed to maybe, you know, like the first round is X amount of weeks, then the next round? Because what I I don't want to stretch it too long and then the folks who apply on day one are waiting for a longer period, so we could do, you know, round one, round two, which sometimes happens with grants.
Yes, thank you. I like that.
And then just jumping on what Councilmember Morales said, maybe we can make it appealable to the planning commission.
I have a question about that. I mean, the planning is not, I mean, if they're looking from a financial perspective with the financial institution and then sort of planning.
Great.
It seems a little confusing to me.
Good idea.
But I don't know what the what would be the appropriate review process.
That's where Mary talks.
Um, yeah, so we advised council on this confidentially, it's attorney client privileged. And all I can do is just make recommendations. But I do understand you are looking for some sort of second review process and we can look at different options of what that review process could be.
Would would that slow down our process of getting checks to the?
Yes, it will because it'll have to come back.
But that's assuming that that they didn't get to where they want to be. So so my sense is full steam ahead and and we'll deal with those as they come up. But I but I would think it would be helpful to know what what that second level of appeal could be to whom would be appropriate and that would give our our city attorney time to really. Look at that for us.
Okay, so are we going to?
Yeah, my recommendation is you make a motion with the items that you have requested.
I think the only thing missing from the list was the definite date for extending the application period. I know staff recommended March thirty first, correct?
Yes, that is correct.
So the motion could be what Vice Mayor stated with along with that March thirty first date. You went through each of the items, Vice Mayor?
And we could add a second round that's April, April one through April thirtieth, if you'd like.
Does anyone want to make a motion along those lines?
Turn on.
Sorry. I make a motion to approve resolution number twenty twenty-three dash twenty-one with the recommended changes.
Do you have a second? Second, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Yes.
All right, motion carries. Now we'll move on to reports. So, just go down the line.
Yes, Mayor Casey, so the first item on here is ratification of the appointments to the various advisory bodies for the city of Hollister. And so I did reach out to those council members and mayor whose terms were ended at the or are going through. Twenty twenty-six or the mayor's term is two years and so the recommendations based on the applications received for the various advisory bodies. Is for District Three, the for the planning commission, the appointment will be for Stephen Belong for District Two, David Huboy. The mayor's appointment will be Carol Lenore. For the airport advisory commission, the mayor's appointment will be for Renee Wells. And for the arts and culture commission, the mayor's appointment will be Sue Everett. District Two will be Christina Ross and there is one youth applicant, Annabelle Roscoe. If the city council is wants to support that one and so this is done by consensus. And then any vacancies that remain, we will continue to advertise for and have open application period for.
I'm sorry, Councilmember, do you want to?
I believe we're going out of order. I think it's Councilmember Reports first and then Appointments.
No, this is G one.
This is item number one for the G section of the agenda.
I am very sorry.
No problem.
Been a long day.
I definitely understand that feeling.
On that note, I'm just, I'm just wondering, because I was trying to figure this out. All my people are staying. Is that what we?
So for District Two, I have David Huboy. And then Chris for the planning commission and for Christina Ross for the arts and culture commission.
Yes, and then Renee Wells for airport.
Um, I, so that was previously not, I believe, District, I didn't hear on that one, so that was going to be the mayor's appointment, but it's, that is absolutely fine to be District Two appointment.
She messaged me.
Okay.
I I probably didn't get back to her, but it doesn't matter. I'd be happy to keep her as my representative. Thank you.
Great.
So do we need a consensus on that?
Just consensus is fine for this, it's just ratification of the appointments.
Everyone?
Okay, thank you very much and we will continue to advertise for it and recruit for the continued vacancies. Thank you.
May I make a suggestion? I'm sorry. I know I don't have anybody for Parks and Recs. Can we reach out to all the people that did apply? And just ask them if they're interested in these other ones and see if we can bring them back because it doesn't make sense to keep on reaching out. So if there's an interest and they didn't get where they wanted, just have them resubmit their applications and then bring back that to the next council meeting. Is that okay?
Absolutely, we can absolutely do that. I can reach out to them. There is one applicant that was for a District Three appointment that was not appointed if you're interested, but I can reach out to all of them as well.
Okay, thanks.
Mayor Casey, thank you for the privilege.
You're welcome.
Madam Mayor, one more thing if I can.
Yes.
Who was the one that was not selected for?
For Parks and Rec?
For District Three?
For Parks and Rec, it was Christine Graziano.
Okay, so she's not selected anywhere?
Currently, she is not.
I want to just have a conversation with her.
Okay.
She was, I took over a term, so I never had an opportunity to check in.
Okay, aside from her, yeah, if you could just reach out to other ones. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So I will do our committee reports now. Councilmember Burns, do you have any?
I have nothing to report. Thank you, mayor.
Councilmember Rosales?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm going to pull a page out of my colleague's playbook next to me here. I've got quite a list, so bear with me. I've been taking notes all night. The last meeting, I went to a training from one seventeen, January seventeen to the twentieth. And I talked to the city manager about this, Paul. I was trying to get in on the meeting on the agenda and I'm not sure if you had a conversation with you, I apologize if you did. It says you can get in through Zoom, you can get in through Facebook, you can get it through YouTube. I forget what other one, every single one I tried, oh, CMAP, surprisingly, none of them were working. So I did log into Zoom and I watched as long as I can while I was driving up to Sacramento, but they. We need to check that because if we're advertising that we have that option for people virtually and we're not, the links were not working. We need to make sure that they're able to watch.
The January?
Yes.
I know that there was on the. Your, you know, the the Minute Track stream or or the CMAP stream. There was a cable we found that was.
Yeah, that's another thing, the Minute Track system. I couldn't get on any of those. That's like four or five things.
That was the one that had the a bad cable. We fixed that already.
All right, so then we need to check YouTube, Facebook.
YouTube, Facebook.
I mean, YouTube is probably the most convenient, but if we're going to advertise it, then we should be able to log in. If I wasn't able to get on, I'm a council member, I wasn't going to attend the meeting, but I wanted to be informed on my drive up there.
Viewing though, those are just streams. You're not actually participating unless you're in Zoom.
I couldn't get on. It was a dead link. There are dead links. And I tried going to the CMAP. I tried going to YouTube to the city of Hollister page. So we just want to double check those and I looked at the Facebook page and I wasn't able to log on. The only way I could log on was through Zoom. Thank you so much.
Throughout the meeting, so.
Okay. The training that I went to was the new mayors and the new councils training up in Sacramento, California. I wrote down a couple of things. I found out after I got there that some things are switching with the virtual meetings and I could have actually attended since I was on business. The attorney shaking her head here, since I was on business and if it was okay with you guys, I could have participated. I didn't know that at the time. No big deal, but that's something that I learned over there. Also, I had an opportunity to get my certificates, the ethics and then the harassment. Generally speaking, I mean, I'm going to go down my list here, but I was talking to my partner and it's just really serves as a refresher. And I want to stress to you guys, my counsel fellow council members here, if you have not gone, you really should attend this meeting. I don't know if you guys have gone or not, but everybody should prioritize going to this meeting. It's for new councils and new mayors and they only do it every couple of years and I haven't gone since I was first elected. There's just so much opportunity there. Basically about meeting decorum, they put on all these wonderful trainings and it's just budget, all this stuff. And for me, it was really insightful to go back after four years and to hear these things after being on the council for years. I'm like, oh, okay. I know what they're talking about this time because I'll be honest, I was like a deer in the headlights when I first went. And it's a little overwhelming when you're newly elected, let's be honest. Also, it gives you an opportunity, and I did this last time I was there, to go and to to sit down and have conversations with our state representatives. So Robert Rivas, I'm a little bit disappointed. He said he was going to meet up with us and then he wasn't there. I even texted him, he never got back to me, so I'm really sad about that. But I did go meet with Ana Caballero, she was in a meeting. She made time to to meet with us and I was there with almost all of the council members from San Juan Batista, except for one of them. So I think that's a good opportunity for our state reps to sit down and have these conversations with us. They need to know what's going on in their communities and what's what's happening. The big thing with Ana, I don't know if you guys know, we're in between senators here in Hollister because of the redistricting. Ana Caballero chose to be our senator. She she asked to be our senator for the next couple of years. But we're considered like an orphan region now because of the redistricting and she actually is going to be representing Merced. John Laird, who I also went to his office, his staff was very, very accommodating, very, very willing to meet with us and talk to us. He's going to be our senator in two years. So just so everybody knows, Ana's our senator now, just for the next two years and then it's going to be Senator John Laird. Who I then had a text conversation. He's very, if you guys don't know him, he's been around, local leader for a number of years. He's now at the state level. You should all make time to meet with him. A lot of history with that gentleman. He couldn't meet with us in person because that was the day that the president was down here and he was down here because it's his area, dealing with Santa Cruz and stuff, so. Again, I have a ton of things. I'm just going to cross these office. I go and a lot of them had to do with that training. I'm not on COG anymore, but it's my understanding that the new COG director reached out to everybody, including some key staff members and elected officials throughout the entire county. On January twenty seventh, I sat down and talked to her, which I was very glad to do because I did have a part in hiring her. I'm very confident in her abilities. I'm looking forward to her leadership here. She, I asked her like, what is this meeting about? She's just trying to get, pick our brains, get some conversation about all of the, what are the wants of the constituents, what are the needs of the constituents? So she can wrap her head around when she looks at those projects and make sense of it like, oh, that's why we're doing this, that's why we're working on that. So again, I am really, really pleased with that COG director and I just wanted to let you know that I met with her. I I'm very, very happy to find out that on Wednesday, this Wednesday, the city of Hollister, I think you all received the email. We're going to be recognized in city of Salinas for a Public Works Award for the traffic improvements that we did on Central Avenue. I'm really proud of that because again, this goes back to the beginning of my me being a council member representative. There was, it was just really, really scary. Central Avenue, when you looked at the data, I don't remember who was sitting up here, it was really, really scary and we had a school there. And that was one of the first traffic calming projects that we did. And because of that work and the data that's showing how much it's improved, we're going to be recognized at a meeting at the Steinback Center this Wednesday. Staff is going to go and present something and I I told them that I would love to go and just accompany them. So congratulations to the city of Hollister and Public Works. I would like to request, now there's been some work on this in the past and I just don't know where it fell off. The impact fees for the Arts and Culture Commission. I was under the understanding that we had like a resolution, we were waiting for attorneys to look at it. I don't know what happened. But about a year or two ago, we created an Arts and Culture Commission for a number of reasons. Anyhow, the impact fees for this commission is going to help generate some revenue to help Tina out so she can have festivals. To ensure that if new businesses are coming here, they're paying into like a public art in lieu. What whatever the business is, but lots of other cities do this and that's going to help generate some cash to beautify our city. So I want to make sure that we can get that back on the table. I mean, we need, we need to get this going. This is one of the things that just kind of just fell off and we really need to get this going. It was right there towards the end. So I'm going to ask that that goes to the Arts and Cult Arts and Culture Commission? Bit of a tongue twister. And then we see that back here. What I heard again and again in Sacramento is the government, the governor's budgets getting slashed quite a bit in areas like education. And what everybody's whispering is that we are headed towards, I hate to even say it publicly, but we need to know that we're headed towards some rough times here. Everybody there, all the other cities are talking about that. So we need to prepare for that. We need to brace and be prepared for that. So I'm sure as we move on, we'll talk more about it. I wanted to share with my colleagues here that they said some of the best councils that they've worked with and we're talking people that have been in the business forty years. They stressed how important it was to have teamwork on your council. Politics is politics. We've been doing this for a while, a lot of us, but. Politics is politics. We've been doing this for a while, a lot of us, but we really need to prioritize coming together, setting goals. If we talk about something, then we need to be about that. Election's over, and a lot of us sat up here and said, we were gonna do this, we were gonna do that. But I don't see that when we're at in the dais. We have to switch those roles, and we need to kick into high gear, and we need to ensure that we're working together. So I just wanted to tell you guys that that was something that I left with, that I was very optimistic about, if I can be honest with you. Sorry, Downtown Ad-Hoc Committee. I've been assigned to the Downtown Ad-Hoc Committee. I guess I can talk about that in the next one. Just give you a general update. I'm trying to cut some things off here, folks. That's gonna go onto the next one. The septic that Mr. Clara was talking about, was that an item that we had at the last meeting for the county? For them to fast-track a way to get city sewer services? And what happened? Because I think I might have lost service by then. Did that get resolved?
It has not been resolved because we didn't want it to be in conflict with trying to come up with a solution for Gavelin College.
What?
It potentially, because Gavelin is out of district, and council always giving me direction to try to find a solution for Gavelin College.
Okay, I think we need to prioritize those people that don't have septic, that need to be connected to the city services rather than a new development out off of Fairview. So I don't know. I guess I missed that part of the meeting. I might have cut off, so that's surprising. That is it. The rest I will wait until... This is just info, right? So, yeah, next. Thanks.
Okay. Councilmember Morales?
Thank you, Mayor. COG, we pushed the, we didn't do anything because we're still missing members from San Juan Batistas, and we will be having a retreat in March to be able to ground all of the new members. There's gonna be a meeting for three CE in regards to building a new community center for children, women and children. We look forward to that meeting. I did attend a volunteer fair at the Hollister High School. I want to thank our city partners here, Parks and Recs. I think there was two other city departments that just spend a lot of time to connect with our community and share the resources that we have and make sure that our young people volunteer and are connected. I'm happy to say that I recruited three volunteers. I'm happy to, and I'm looking forward to working with them and training them on all things politics.
Councilmember Perez?
The only thing to report is Ambag was postponed until Wednesday. We didn't have a quorum, so that's it.
Right. So I have a few items. So I actually attended the National Conference of Mayors. It was in Washington, DC in January. It was a fascinating thing to observe two hundred and fifty mayors from across the country. I had an opportunity and met many of our local mayors in the Bay Area, and hopefully these connections are gonna be real valuable as we look at regional issues. Also, we had all these sessions talking about the real fun topics of things like transportation, homelessness, workforce development. And one of the things that I thought was most valuable is that they had folks from the government, from these various agencies, talking about the funding and the legislation and how to, you know, how to connect. And I think that's one of the hardest things about federal funding is finding the right place. So I thought that was very valuable. And they also, on the sessions, they'd have a panel with mayors from various places that would talk about how they handled or overcame an issue around transportation or around homelessness, what they were doing. And that was really inspiring for me. I just feel like this was a really valuable thing, especially because we are looking at how we can apply for some of the federal infrastructure funding. Last week, I was down in Southern California because I missed the Sacramento New Mayor Academy. So I traveled to Southern California last week, and it was packed with information, as Councilmember Rosales said. And I recommend it as well if you haven't attended. I think it's really gonna help me as I navigate this new role. And I just really appreciated the ability to network. I networked a lot with the city council, a lot of them and mayors. They were mostly Southern California, although there were some from Northern California. But it was really helpful to talk about the problems they're facing and what their, steps they're taking. So again, it was really valuable. As far as committee work, while I was down there, we had an intergovernmental committee meeting. It was by Zoom. Councilmember Rosales was also in on that one, and we were discussing the hospital. The county had decided that intergovernmental would probably be the best committee to deal with that issue and because it's comprised of the different governments. And so we had, we got together, interim CEO Mary Casillas from the hospital was there in attendance. She kind of gave us a little bit of an update and talked about the financial consultants, the lawyers, the auditors that they're working with right now, and the steps they've been taking and where they're headed. The county had also invited in a consultant who had worked with the Watsonville hospital crisis to talk about the work that group had done and to save the hospital there. And one of the things that I felt was really extremely important was her point about how the community and the cities and the county rallied around and supported saving the hospital. And I think it's something we really need to work on and do here as well. We did have a bit of a push from, from county folks to hire this Watsonville consultant, and they had talked about the county and cities paying for this. And both myself and Councilmember Rosales kind of pushed back on this idea since there's already multiple consultants that the hospital has hired. So we've asked that they bring, that they come in and give us a report. And the CEO, Mary Casillas, said that she would try to have them at the next meeting. The other thing is the governmental, intergovernmental committee only typically meets once a month, but will be meeting much more frequently as we try to address this crisis and figure out how we can support the hospital going forward. So I think that's it for committee meetings. So we could move on then to the next item, which would be informational reports. I thought you did committee already. You talked about your conference. You've got the conference in at least.
Yeah, that was informational.
Was it? Okay. Do you want to go? Go for it. Go for it.
All right, sorry. For the committees, again, the mayor had already said that we were on intergovernmental. I have not heard from the hospital. I have not been at any meetings where they talked about what happened. I just haven't had the time. I was really, really pleased to see that they were there. I've gotta say, I went a little bit late to the meeting, so I didn't know what was, what was going on because of a conflict. I'll get into that in a minute. However, if we're going to rally around the hospital such as they want, as they want us to, then they need to be transparent. They need to be open. They need to be honest and transparent. I asked a couple of questions because I was there. Number one, what led you to get into this position? What happened? We need to know. I don't know. I'm a council member. I need to know what happened for you to end up in this position, and that way I have an answer to my, to tell my constituents. I think it's very, very maybe illegal and unethical, I don't know, for a sitting board member to now be the CEO making financial decisions of a hospital that's going bankrupt. Let's be honest. I am very concerned about that. She did give me some answers about why they are potentially closing, most likely gonna close, and what got them to that, and what is the solution to get out. That was my second question for them. What are we gonna do to get out of this? And I'll be honest with you. I do not hear, from what I got from that meeting, any viable solution. If they really want us to rally around them, then we need to have a real partnership. We need to have real transparency. I don't know if hearing from her consultants is gonna give us that. I don't know. Maybe we do need to look and listen to what the county's doing. Maybe we do need to have another set of eyes to do that. But after this conversation with the intergovernmental, I can tell you that my feeling was they don't want that. They don't want another consultant helping them out. I do agree that that's probably the best place for us to have those meetings and to bring that back. I do agree that we need to have those meetings very consistently. But I'll be honest, I've got a lot of questions and not a lot of faith in what's happened at the hospital and what is going to happen. Hearing from the consultant in Watsonville was very enlightening because she could answer a lot of the questions that I had. She's got previous experience. It just doesn't sound to me that they have enough funding to get them to where they need to be, and I don't even know what, where they need to be because they're just trying to, to ask for money to keep. She kept saying, keep the runway going, keep the runway going. Well, what does that mean? What, what's the plan? What is your business plan? How are we gonna sustain our hospital? How are we gonna provide these services? So as of right now, I just keep hearing, we've got enough money until this date. We got enough money till this date. We need more money. We need more money. Well, we need to have anybody, somebody look at that to see if it's really a viable plan. That's what I'm really, where I'm at after that meeting. I'll be honest with you. Those were my feelings. I was late because I was double booked. I don't know if I'm saying this right. I think it's the water reclamation. I don't know who was on there before. San Bernito County Reclamation. I really enjoyed that meeting, I'll be honest, because water is so important in the four years that I've been here. I have not had the pleasure of getting to know all the ins and outs of where we get water. So a really nice group of people, by the way. It's a really chill environment. Since we had a bit of a time conflict, they're going to be moving the intergovernmental meeting to Wednesday for a number of reasons, but I'm glad so that I can serve on both of them. Also, we had an oversight. It was an emergency oversight board meeting. I've sat on that before. We meet like once a year, I think, Brett. And we did you the honor, since you were not able to go, Councilmember Burns, of electing you as the chair of that meeting, so congratulations. And the other gentleman who was late was from Gavelin College. We made him the vice chair. I thought that was hilarious. But those meetings are really quick. We meet once a year, and I trust that Brett is making sure that the money is going where it's going. I know it's our job. We looked into it, but it looked legit. That is all. Thank you so much for allowing me to go out of order.
Okay, so shall we go to Councilmember Burns for informational?
Thank you, Mayor. I will, I do have a list as well. Mine is probably a little more formal. So first of all, I want to say thank you to everybody in the audience, all the staff, all the former council members that were here. I appreciate you guys, and I appreciate you putting in your time to be here with us tonight. So to begin with, I do want to acknowledge the plight of our food trucks. And, and I did bring up the drive-by experience I had driving down the five, I guess actually up to five for Lathrop. And, and my sense is if they can do it, they're a city that's smaller than us. I believe we can find a way to get there as well. And, and maybe, maybe we have to start with redefining the ordinance, but I would like to move that forward in a timely manner. Seems like we've been talking about this for as long as I've been on council in some form or another. Want to move forward and request to review and discuss the fire chief's contract in closed session on February twenty-first. I'd also like to request to review and discuss the city manager's contract and performance on February twenty-first in closed session on both of those items. I would like to know when cameras will be installed at the skate park on Memorial as requested about eleven months ago. Understand that there's some follow-up work that was gonna be done with the Parks and Rec Commission, but I also understand that we had a shooting somewhere in that area as recently as yesterday. And so I would say times of the essence, and I think we've been patient. If we've been waiting eleven months, we need to get that moving forward. Also like to know when we're gonna recruit for the Parks and Recreation Director position. Would like to know where we're at in codifying the requirements for a hearing officer position in the appeal fee hearing process. It's my understanding that we have a hearing officer that's actually a former retired city employee. While that may not technically be a conflict, it's hard for me not to perceive it is. And I also understand that they don't reside in the state, and so maybe that's changed. But if it hasn't, I think we need to move forward, and, and I believe in the transparency in that process. I'd like to know, somebody reached out to me recently, and I understand that there's a development, a project going on, a mega building out on the industrial park, and it's apparently top secret. And apparently there's only two or three people that know about this, and, and I don't know what I don't know, but I am curious why we can't know as council members who's going in there. And so I was just gonna push that out there. Also gonna request that we rename the community center in the memory of Pauline Valdevia, and I would suggest we do that immediately. I know that there's a process for parks, but I did not see a defined process for city buildings. I think, I don't think we could find anybody that's more deserving than her. And so it's unfortunate that we couldn't have done it while she was still walking this planet with us, but better late than never. I also had an opportunity to read an article in a local paper, and it talked about the city's response to the grand jury inquiry about animal control. And I was, I was surprised to read in that article, and I don't know that it's actually accurate, but then again, I don't know that it is not, that we don't have the money to expand the facility. If we have a need to expand the facility, I do believe we have the money to do that. Also think the timing's pretty apropos, since we're going into budget conversations. Also read that the grand jury requested or recommended that we hire two part-time employees, and I did believe, Mr. Miller, I saw your response, would be we'd prefer to hire one full-time. I could absolutely get on board with that. And again, I would like to know more about that, please. I'm also requesting that our city council formally request through the city that either the district attorney, the state attorney general, investigate the Hazel Hawkins Hospital for any improprieties. I don't know if they have any jurisdiction in that regard, but it's clear to me that there are a lot of facts that are not available. And I would also say that I certainly have zero appetite to loan the hospital any money whatsoever to extend a runway. And, and part of that, as Councilmember Rosales mentioned, was you can't get enough information, and they haven't come to us as far as I'm aware, but I'm just putting that out there at this point. I'd also like to request that the city pay internet costs at the community center for the computers and the printer that Lulac received through a grant and donated for community members' use. I was under the impression that was happening, but I have since been told that that's not happening. I'm also requesting that the city council authorize a proclamation recognizing Lulac's thirty-five years of history and service to our community. Oh, one other thing. And, and so finally, when I ran for office in 2020, I committed to representing the residents of District Four, agreeing to be civil and hold government and myself accountable and transparent. So on August twenty-seventh of 2022, our police department had the misfortune to have to respond to a call of a mountain lion observed at large in District Four neighborhood. Law enforcement responded with fish and wildlife personnel. Unfortunately, the lion was shot, and it later died after being transported to the Oakland Zoo for treatment. At the city council meeting on September sixth of 2022, during my council member comments that were recorded, I requested that an independent investigation of the incident be conducted and the body camera video be released. I later became aware that a resident in District Four had sustained damage during the incident as well. I was later advised that the situation would be reviewed in closed session. After not hearing anything for about three months plus, I followed up with staff in December and was told that it did not meet the criteria for discussion in closed session. I'm therefore requesting that the matter be independently investigated and that the body camera video be released. And when the investigation is completed, that it be presented to the community during a regularly scheduled city council meeting as an engendized item. And so that would complete my comments, Mayor. Thank you.
Councilmember Morales?
I had at a previous council meeting, I had requested a procurement policy to look at how we do a lot of our construction, our public works projects, including buying to include language that not just looks at the lowest bid, but looks at qualified workforce and provides preference to local hire and veterans. So I'd like to know a time certain of when that's actually coming back to the city council.
Yeah, I can answer right now. You gave staff thirty days. Actually, I think the city attorney asked, was gonna ask for a little bit more time because they want to review it because of the parameters that are being put into it, but we're trying to do it as timely as possible.
Thank you. This is also a friendly reminder that I still am interested in reviewing the four-leaf contract. Also like to ask that we do compliance training for kind of public works projects for any of our, for any staff that touches any of that type of work or oversees any type of contracts or bidding process. This is, this can be obtained free through the state. I'd like for staff to come back with updated information on Community Foundation, the $60,000, when that's going to be released to the flood victims or flood impacted residents, and if we could just get some feedback back as to the process. A couple of us went to see them Friday, Saturday, and there's been no word in terms of when that's happening, so.
Sorry, can you repeat that one real quick?
Money that was raised by, I believe, the Community Foundation for the flood impacted residents, and when that's going to be released to them, and if it has not, if we can send a strong letter to the Community Foundation asking when that's going to happen. I also wanted to just circle back on the food truck. I believe that we had a council, three council members had requested that on April the 4th of 2022, and the timeline that was provided in our updated city council matrix was that it was going to be brought back after the general plan. Is that true? And I'd like to see that come back a lot earlier.
That was the initial plan, but due to the requests from council, it needs to be moved forward, so that's, we'll work on that.
Do we have an anticipated timeframe for that?
No, I think Christie already left. Adriana, oh, Chris, sorry, Christie D.
My grand entrance.
The food truck ordinance, I mean, the general plan is talked about being August or September, but I know council wants to get the food truck ordinance. Do you have any idea when we could have that front of council?
Yeah. Anyone?
Thank you, Mayor, and council members. We do have a staff member working on the food truck ordinance, and Adriana may have a little bit more.
So we have, we have a senior planner working on, working with PD as well on both the events program and the mobile food truck ordinance. So they kind of overlap a little bit in some areas. When you have an event, you want to be able to have your food trucks and stuff like that, so be able to check that off as well. So there, she's actually drafting the, both of those at the same time and working with several departments for the events program portion of it, too. So like parks, and who else? Fire, and PD, and it takes, takes a village. So that's one of.
Do we have estimated time?
So the reason I ask is we brought it, brought it forth in April after hearing many concerns, and so we formally asked in April, and it's February.
Yeah, so in the, so in the process of the last year, we, there was a lot of zoning code ordinances that came forward, and we had the study session where we brought forward a lot of them. So what happened was those got prioritized because they became, because of state legislation. So we brought on Mindy, I want to say like two months ago. So she, she was added to the team about two months ago just specifically to help us with this portion and coordinate with all of the different departments. So I'd say.
When are you going to bring it back?
I can, I could probably give you a much better idea, maybe in 60 days.
How about you bring it back in 60 days with that? Or give us an update in 30 days?
I can do an update in 30 days. That's reasonable. Yeah.
I just don't want to see another year go by.
Yeah, I know, I agree. Yeah.
Also, September the 6th of 2022, I'd asked to look for areas for a park in District Three. So I've provided, I think, the Parks and Rec Department some lots that were empty to follow up. I'd like to also get an update on that as well. Thank you.
Councilmember Perez?
You guys might be disappointed, but I only have one item. Actually, I'd like to learn more about the history of the Condor, the statue. I'm not sure what the name of it is. It's supposed to be the gateway to the Pinnacles. We have actually with signs by Van. We've already paid for this structure. Brett, do you know what we're talking about? It's the east.
Right, no, I just want to make sure.
The west. Come on, Roland, speak up.
It's at the city yard. We paid for it, but then I think the bid came back to put it on a roundabout over by the bridge, and it was way overbid, so we couldn't do it. I think, I don't know, this was years ago. We'd have to check in with staff.
Correct, in that project.
We have it done, right?
The west side, we got the grant for that airway, and then that's, the Condor would be placed there in the roundabout.
So it's coming, right?
Correct.
Oh, so it's coming. Okay. So it's not just sitting there waiting for a spot? Okay. That's it.
So, so we have the statue. Can we put it somewhere else other than the corp yard where it could be appreciated between now and then? Maybe in one of our parks or?
Well, I mean, it's meant to go on the roundabout, but.
Well, I understand, but you know, how long's it been?
Years.
Years. Yeah, did it have babies? I mean, it's, 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 it's kind of frustrating when I hear this stuff.
No, it's been a frustra, why we went forward with a project before we even got the approval of the road project, but this was, I'll try to find the approval of the the resolution.
We could put it in my front yard since I don't want to put my jet skis up there no more.
Yeah, we'll try. I'll try to get you the message, Adriana.
Done.
That's it.
Okay. Okay, I have a few items. First is with regard to Lafco. Previously, we had appointed Rick Perez to serve as the alternate, and I've since been informed that we actually alternate who is the alternate between ourselves and San Juan Batista. So it is San Juan Batista's turn, and so I need to kind of unappoint Rick Perez as the alternate, so I don't know if we need a consensus on that or what, but.
I think because it's like the first time I've been taken off of a committee.
So it was just by consensus when we appointed, so.
Yeah, just by consensus. It sounds just like by operation of how this works is going to happen regardless.
Okay, so he is no longer on Lafco. Congratulations. The second item is I have been speaking with the chief, and also I did a tour of the animal shelter and spoke with the staff a little bit, just talking about some of their challenges. I know they're doing a lot of really good work, and so I wanted to get consensus from the council to add an ad hoc committee for the animal shelter. I know we had one once upon a time, and it's time to bring it back, so if the council is, has, if we have consensus, then.
Can, can I make a suggestion? Since I was on the ad hoc committee, that I be reappointed to the ad hoc committee? I've got some ideas, and I've done quite a bit of work, so I would like to make that request if it's okay.
I don't have a problem.
Mayor, I have a, I have a question as well. It's my understanding that we provide animal control services for the county as well, and and I would think it might behoove us to bring somebody from the board over to sit on that committee as well. I don't know how we would do that, Mary, but.
You could invite them to participate.
Okay, okay. Yeah, I, I think it'd be nice because I kind of got a little frustrated when they got interviewed for the grand jury report, and they go, well, we just pay the city, so it kind of pushed it all on us. Time for them to step up. Thank you, Mayor.
I've also agreed to serve on that committee, so I don't have a problem if Roland also wants to sit. So if you all agree, then we can go ahead and create that, that ad hoc committee. One of my other items is that we've talked about, I believe we've talked about having a special meeting to talk about our roads and streets and speed humps, and I know it's, it's been put out there, but I'd really like to get something scheduled, especially because about half of the things I get from the folks in the community is about lad lane and are you really going to paint the, the things crooked again or curved, and speed humps, and also the poor state of some of our roadways and alleys, and you know, so I would like to have a special meeting if we can set that up. And then the last thing that I have is regarding our council retreat, which has kind of been pushed out a bit, and my understanding is there's some disagreement as far as bringing a consultant in to help us with our strategic planning, team building, goal setting, as far as the cost, and so I know that there's a council member that doesn't want to participate if we, if we pay a consultant, so it's kind of put us on hold, and I really think we need to move ahead because we're already in February, and if we push this out any longer, we're going to be a third of the year done without having goal setting taken place, and that really informs our agendas. You know, I do understand the importance of goods, being good stewards of the finances, but I also think it's really important to have a neutral consultant there with us to guide the process instead of having staff trying to do that, because obviously there's going to be disagreements and, and you know. So anyways, I guess, I know that right now, or the last I heard is that our city manager is spending time trying to go out and find a little, something that might be a little cheaper, but frankly, his spending time costs money, so I, I'd like to get some input from, from the council on this. I think it's really vital to get our goals and priorities in place. That'll help us to, you know, determine the placement and prioritizing our agenda items. And I, I almost feel like we shouldn't accept any more individual council member items added when we don't have the goals in place, and until we can do that, so because how do we know if, you know, if people are bringing individual items forward, how do we know if they fit our goals if we don't have our goals? So I guess that's my point, and so I'd really like to get input from each of you as far as how we can, you know, get some consensus and move forward.
I, I would like to talk about that if you're.
Sure.
Okay, thanks. Brett, I thought that we did have something scheduled where we all agreed to put something on the calendar, and we did have something scheduled that, if, if memory serves me correct, that was on January 28th. Is that not correct? Brett?
Twenty eighth or twenty.
Okay, so I was at the training. I was going to come back, and I received an email saying that one council member asked to reschedule the whole thing after we all committed to that. One council member. I don't think that one council member should be able to make that decision, so.
Okay.
That's the first thing. Who was that one council member that rescheduled?
That was me. Because of the extension of the National Mayor's Conference, I couldn't get back in time for the.
Okay, so we all agreed to be here. We're talking about setting priorities and goals. It's not a council member. I think that's a bit disingenuous to send an email saying it was a council member. It was the mayor who did not go to that meeting, and in my opinion, there needs to be two people, two people to change something, or it has to take place in a public setting. So for us to come back now and to say it's because another council member doesn't want to participate because of the cost, I think also is a bit disingenuous. Let's be very honest and transparent about that.
Okay.
Well, I mean, our consultant that we, I'll kind of back up a little bit. Staff still recommends that we have a consultant. However, the consultant does not want to participate if there's only, if not all five council members are present. The success rate of, of the process goes way down when not all five people participate, and that's why he has chosen not to move forward if not all five council members are present. So, or I should say, members of the council, that's, so that's, that's where we stand.
I'm happy to do it. We had a date. I'm happy to do it. I'm happy to participate with the consultant and reschedule again, but again, I don't think it's fair that one person can change it for all of us. We need to come together as a team, like we said, and prioritize the goal setting whenever we need to do it. I'm happy to do it again and participate.
And to, to add, staff has taken over doing the goal setting. We have that set for February 25th, so that, that's what we have right now set, but I mean, like I said, staff still recommends a third party to for, to help kind of help with disagreements and maybe give direction from other cities that have some best practices, but that's the choice of council.
So do you have any? Oh, sorry.
Thank you, Mayor. So just in full transparency, I'm that one council member that has declined to participate because originally the estimate, as I recall, was about $12,000. Thank you for trying to whittle it down, and as I recall, it got whittled down to like $9,500 or so.
I should clarify, just so, you know, if anybody does appropriate records request, it was $12,900, and then we, to get it from, out from two meetings down to one and do some basically Zoom meetings with the different council members, we did get it down to like 900 or 9,900.
Right, so, so I still think that's an absurd amount of money to spend for this process, and and to be clear, we've been pushing for this since I've been on city council, and and I'm, I've grown a lot more gray hair, and we have not gotten here, and so I don't want to be an obstructionist, but I also want to be clear that you chose a consultant that has chosen to dig his feet in and says it's got to be all or none. Well, I'm sorry, I'm going to be the none guy then, but if if we can find another way to get there, which you've proposed, I'm 100% committed to that, but I refuse to spend $10,000 for this when we could use that money for many other things, and I know that's a miniscule amount of money, but that's still money that could be spent in other areas, whether it be a shade structure for one of our parks. I, I could think of a million ways I'd rather spend $10,000 than going through this exercise at, at that price, so at least now everybody knows I'm the guy. Thank you.
Councilmember Morales.
So I also thought that the amount was ridiculous, and those are the words that I used when I sent that to Brett. This is ridiculous. In other jurisdictions, priority setting is part of the budget process, so you have a lot of things happen starting in November, so we're already behind, way behind. You have the entire process completed early January, February, and then you begin your budget process. So we don't need a consultant to do what every other jurisdiction does and just prioritize the areas from a lot of different perspectives, and that includes our department heads and staff in terms of what do we need to do that's a priority this year, allocate the appropriate resources, and then begin working on that so that we have measurable goals and actual outcomes. So we don't need a consultant for that. That's one of the things I said. I'm happy to participate in whatever's required of me, but I do not like to waste money, and we should have basic process as part of our infrastructure. These are the basic things that all government organizations must do, and we don't need a consultant, and we don't need to push it out, we just need to do it.
Councilmember Perez?
I'm not sure all the extra stuff that this consultant can bring to us. It might be their field. It's not my field. I, I'm just naturally just want to work together with everybody, and whatever that means, let's do it. If 10,000 is too much, then you know, it's too much. I don't know what the prices are. I just know that we need to get together and come to terms with, we need to go, we need to know which way we're going, you know? Let's take, yeah, so it's, I don't know if we really need the consultant, or maybe we try it on our own first, you know, but we got to do something. It's, it's only February.
So we have a consensus that we don't want, I guess, a consultant, and then so is staff going to try to just?
We'll be handling it.
So the 25th, I can take off my calendar?
No, we were having that meeting on the 25th. This was the plan.
Is that a Saturday?
Yes, that's what council had requested, was a Saturday.
Perfect, and then just so we're clear, so the media doesn't turn, basically what we're planning on doing is setting goals to set policy so that we know where we're going, and Councilmember Morales is right. The budget is coming around. We have to identify those goals now. What is your priority? Your priority, your priority, your priority, so that we can budget for that, and then we can start moving forward, because I think that sometimes the media gets a hold of these things and they twist it around, but that's what we're doing, and I agree, we don't need a consultant to do that. We just need to get a date on the calendar, commit, and let's move forward. Thank you.
Okay, so we are set then for February 25th, and staff will give us more info. Okay. Any updates on city council projects and finished business? Councilmember Perez?
Thank you, thank you, Mayor. So on item H1A.
Well, you still have city manager, city attorney.
Okay.
Sorry, sorry. Yeah, sorry, I just, that's, I think Tim and I were looking at each other. So, Councilmember Burns, you brought up the food trucks. Are you, are you okay with what staff brought? Are you, are you okay with what staff brought, spoke about? I know we want to get as fast as possible, but.
I, I have to be honest. I'm 100% frustrated. Again, we're approaching a year, it sounds like, since we've had meaningful dialogue and conversations. And so I'm going to lose my mind if we come back in April and we haven't made significant progress. And for me, I know the mayor's reached out and asked what our priorities are individually. And I would say that's absolutely one. And it's not, you know, I, I think we've been patient. And, and it's unfair to those people that are making their living on that with kind of teasing them and never getting them to the finish line. I also think from what I heard was environmental health may be part of the challenge. And so I'm hoping that when we come back with a project or a comprehensive conversation, that they will be part of it because it really doesn't matter if they, if we can't get to yes. And, and I do believe we can. I absolutely know this city can. But our partners need to step up and help as well and be reasonable. So thank you.
Okay. Is there a consensus to bring the fire chiefs and the city managers' contracts back to, to the next meeting?
Yeah.
Okay. Status on the skate park cameras, we actually discussed it in a department head meeting today. Our issue is power and we're trying to work with the, that is a veterans park ran by the vets commission and also the county. So we're just having issues with, for power. We're actually, I've got the chief looking at if we can get a solar camera out there instead.
That was going to be my question because there's some amazing solar stuff out there now. Is it as convenient as hardwired? No. But the resolution is amazing. And my hope is that they never catch anybody doing anything, but when people know it's there, they stop. I mean, we're getting a little crazy around here lately.
Right.
Thank you.
So that's the status on that one. And we'll get you status on the Parks and Rec Director as a group. And we're still working with the city attorney on the appeals authority person. And we'll get also information out on the fulfillment center. We're hoping that they're going to disclose their, who they are in the next couple of months. So I'll be pushing on that. Does, is there a consensus to bring back a agenda item to rename the community center after Pauline Valdivia?
I already brought that up and we were talking about. Didn't, didn't you bring that up before? And there was, we had to wait a year after.
There, we do have a policy that was adopted and it does say a year. But I was going to discuss that with our city attorneys. And then I know, talking with Pauline's family, they'll submit an application to do that, to name the community center after Pauline. And in addition, I have talked to Hovness staff and they would like to set a date in May because that is the month where they celebrate the seniors' activities on behalf of Pauline. So I'm kind of working with them on those things, too.
Does our policy actually address buildings? I didn't.
Yes, it does.
Because I looked at, that's what.
Cities.
Yeah, okay.
City facilities.
Okay, all right. Thank you. I think that would be great personally.
Okay.
We'll look at it and we'll make our, staff will make a decision on what to bring forward.
Did you get consensus?
Do we have consensus?
Yes.
It could be a year from now for all, but we'll figure it out. We're trying to make a.
I'm not at least.
Sure.
I just also like to update on the art development fee. Tomorrow is a art and culture meeting and we will present that, the, the fee structure to our, our commission. We did last month and they had a couple of questions. So we worked with our city attorney's office and tomorrow we'll finalize it.
The animal control expansion, we'll work on that as part of the, the budget. I'll work with the chief and see where we are on that. And that needs assessment. I'm not sure, I'd have to get legal opinion on what we can do to investigate Hazel Hawkins. I don't know if there's consensus depending on what legal says to continue that.
I'm just wondering. I know that we cannot go and work for a profit that we've done business with. That might be somewhere to start. Is this person allowed to be on a board and then to go work as a CEO right after? I don't know. It sounds like it's, I know for us it's not allowed. That might be one place to start. But I, I fully support that. We need, we need to find out what's going on there.
I mean, I would think that's, as individuals, you could probably contact a DA, too. But I, as a council, that's where I'm wondering if that's consensus to do that.
No. No, I, so you want to investigate the.
That was Councilmember Perez's request.
No, my, my request was to have this council write a letter to the district attorney to, to do a consideration to look into what's going on over there. And if the DA can't do it, then the state AG. And, and so if.
As far as specifically the herd taking on.
No, 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 no. The overall, I'm not looking, I'm not on a witch hunt by any means. I just, we cannot get consistent facts. And, and so in, in my mind, we don't necessarily have a, a responsibility to provide medical service, but given the fact that we're two-thirds of the county population, we may have some moral responsibility. And I, I, if, if we can't get all the facts, I mean, every time I turn around, I hear something new, something closing, and somebody loaning money. And, and so, but I, I would like, I don't know. Those were my shots at it. I mean, worst case scenario, as a, as a citizen, I will go to the civil grand jury and make that request once I know they're seated. But, you know, I think there's more strength in it coming from this council. And what I don't know is at some point are they going to come and ask us for money like they did with the county? And so I'm, I'm really concerned because if anybody should want a hospital here at my age, it should be me. And so I don't know. And I know that we don't have resources either to do, to do something except maybe a token gesture of our, of our commitment to Hazel Hawkins. And this has nothing to do with the people working there. It's got everything to do with what appears to me to be a catastrophic systemat, or systemic failure. And, and this isn't new news. I mean, this has gone on off and on, as I know, over time. So.
I, I hear you. I hear your points. I don't know that I would agree on something like that. I feel like they have a lot that they're dealing with right now. And it does change. I mean, I have been fairly closely involved with this because I do feel strongly that we have to keep those doors open. So I've been trying to do whatever I can do to help and lend support. There are some very specific factors. You can go and look at the forum that was held, were questions and answers. But things are changing and they are getting money and support from the state. That does extend the runway, which is what I guess they like to call it. But, you know, I just don't know if adding a layer of, okay, we want to now investigate you over this. It's like, I want them to focus on keeping those doors open and I just don't know that this is going to help anything at this point. I would like us to move forward and not sit and, you know, rehash whether or not, you know? At least that's my, my point of view. So go ahead.
So I would respectfully disagree. I think as individuals, you can request the DA or the Attorney General, I can give you his number, to do any type of investigation you like. But as city representatives, we have to look at the impact that it has on our community. Whether, if they come and ask us for money, that's a separate topic altogether. But anybody can request an investigation at any time. I think we're free to do that. I don't think that's my role right now as city council member to, to ask the DA or the Attorney General for investigation. I think if something does happen, that's going to, that's going to happen. And this is a phenomenon that's happening throughout the state of California. And I can tell you, there's a, there's a lot, we have 65% of our population that commute out. For anybody to get any type of service, it will be at least a 30-minute, if they're lucky. And if it's on traffic, so you're looking at an hour, that's the difference between life and death. Whatever they did, I mean, yes, there needs to be a purse session or boxing session or whatever you want to have. That needs to happen. But I think as city council, we need to look at what's the best interest for our community right now. And I don't think that, it's a longer conversation, I think. But at this point, I'm not willing to support that. Respectfully decline.
I agree with everything everybody said, except that I don't think it's my position to do this. I, I think they should be, that we should do everything we can to try, as a token, to try to help out, to show our support for our, our hospital. I use the hospital more often than I'd like to. But the, you know, we need to keep, our hospital needs to stay open because it, and it's, it will. And you know what? It's, they keep extending that runway because if you run out of runway, you, you're dead. And so they keep extending that runway. And you know what? Hopefully they're going to get a partner that's going to come in there and help them out. I just don't, you know what? Does it need to be investigated? Yes. Do, do we need to know exactly why they're failing? Yeah. Is it happening throughout California and the United States? Yeah. So it's like, there's so many more questions. I just think, right now, I, I don't feel the need to, to push the, the DA or, or anybody to, to, to come up with these, these answers for us.
So we don't have consensus then at this?
But consensus is only two. Where'd she go?
It's three.
To bring it.
To bring it to the DA.
Yes. I, I certainly need to see somebody else looking into the situation and for us to open it up and be a little bit more transparent. Whether that means a district attorney referral or whether that means partnering with the county to have a third-party, non-bias consultant working closely with the hospital, I'm willing to consider that as well. But I definitely like to have the conversation and bring it back.
What is, is the county doing anything as far as, as an inquiry, investigation on that? I don't, see, I don't know so much. There's so much I don't know, so it's hard to.
Yeah, I was the same until we went to intergovernmental. And what the mayor had shared is that they would like to partner with us and San Juan Batista to hire a non-bias, third-party consultant who's been through this in Watsonville to potentially partner with the hospital and to look into their stuff and to help them get out of it. I think that that's definitely a good investment if we want to go that route. So maybe we should just, I don't know, we're getting all over the place.
Yeah.
With it. But definitely bring it back and let's have the conversation.
There's other things happening that there's non-disclosure agreements. And so there's, a lot of that's already happening.
Yep. And I would just add that, you know, we have agreed to have their consultants come in from the hospital because they do have a slew of them to give us a presentation. I'd like them to at least have that opportunity to share with us where things are at and maybe give us a better picture. And if we're not happy at that point, then we could talk about hiring another consultant. So I just would rather at least give them that opportunity.
I, I always get real concerned with these because it's mostly yes and no. You know, there was no consensus to go forward. So just, so I'll move on to the next one.
But you have two council members wanting to bring it back.
Consensus is three.
It's three?
Yeah.
Okay. Thanks.
Sorry. Didn't want to. And then Councilor Burns, the internet for the LULAC program at the community center, it was supposed to be, you can correct me if I'm wrong, Paul, that it was, LULAC was providing, it was separate, so that wasn't on our internet system. That was the biggest concern. But we can look.
That's correct. It, it's a service that LULAC, I guess, was getting a grant for or providing. They brought their internet connection in there. They brought the computers in there. We have no oversight over any of that. And if you're talking, taking over the costs of that, that's probably just a budget thing and then, you know, figuring out the billing, I guess, to the city and taking over those services. But as far as them connecting to an outside agency, connecting to our internal network, I, I, I don't agree with that. I, I understand. And, and so maybe this is a better conversation for our upcoming budget because this is the first I'm hearing that they aren't part of the city system. But, but.
Yeah, they're, the internet that they were using was not part of our system.
Right. And so I, I don't know what the terms of the grant were or are, but at some point, if we could assume, assume them, at the end of the day, it's our, our community members that are using them. I understand that, that during the floods, we actually had people in there using their, that's, those computers. And so. Yeah, it's, as long as it's a separate system, you know, I mean, we can budget to take over that. Okay. Yeah, I think. Making those payments or whatever. But as far as connecting any outside agency to the city network. No, no, I would never suggest that. Thank you.
All right. I, I mean, I guess, I mean, probably to make the budget system more efficient. Do we have consensus to put that in the budget or no consensus? I have, I know I have one, two. I'm, and so, okay, two, two again. Rick, you're the.
Say again?
For staff to, do we have consensus for, to bring forward as part of the budget process to provide internet service for the LULAC program at the community center?
Oh, yeah. What is the 10 computers we have there?
Correct.
How much is the internet for that? Is that $4?
It could, we, I did rough estimate it from $3,200 a year, $3,200 a year for the services.
During the floods. Come on up.
May I ask a quick question on that?
Go ahead.
Are we talking IT to be managing those devices, supporting them? Fixing them.
And councilmembers of the public might be interested in this conversation as well. So it's really, it, these conversations are going way beyond what the Brown Act typically allows, so.
Right.
Bring it back, yes.
Okay. And then I was trying to stay up with, oh, my, it's the second LULAC item. I'm sorry. Councilmember Burns.
The, the resolution recognizing their 35 years of service to our community.
Okay.
So that will be recognizing the 35 years of service that, when they were supposedly certified, whatever you want to follow. Yeah.
I'm a yes.
Did we ever get feedback from legal on this?
Well, the feedback I provided was I need to see what the resolution or what the certificate would say. Are you recognizing past performance? Are you recognizing current existence because there's a question? So my legal analysis is I need to look at the actual document.
Yeah, from my understanding, we're just recognizing them for their past.
Past.
That's my understanding. 35 years of past experience. We need, we need to honor them, in my opinion.
Yeah, next year I'll be 35.
So, yeah, if we can keep the language, I'm, I'm okay with that.
Okay. Got a consensus on that. Do I have consensus to bring back the investigation for the mountain lion?
I have a point of order on that.
Okay, sorry. Go ahead.
So, so my recollection was, and I think it could be easily confirmed if we went back to the council meeting on September 6th, I believe it was. I believe there was consensus at that time. So if there was in fact consensus then, do we need it again now?
I would have thought you got a, a legal opinion since then, so I'm.
Yeah, and I just don't recall everything that happened with the mountain lion. I don't even remember what I ate yesterday. So very short memory. So I'd have to look at it again, Councilmember Burns. And I can make a recommendation at the next meeting, provide more of an update if you'd like.
Or, or, well, yeah, I, well, I, I think the facts speak for themselves. I mean, back at that council meeting, I believe there was consensus. That's how I got all the dates. I, I went back to the internet and found it all. And so.
Councilmember Burns said there was consensus back.
Okay, we'll look.
Here. Here.
Can we just make a sentence now?
Well, I'd support that, of course.
You could always do that now, too.
Okay. We'll get you the four-leaf contract, Councilmember Morales, and I, actually, that's a great idea, to give compliance training on bidding with our staff, we will work on getting that to the staff. I will talk with the community foundation on the flood victims, to get that information out to council. And I will have staff, Councilmember Morales, get you an update on the parks in District 3. I'll get the information on the Condor, for, for the Gateway Monument. We were trying to do, as part of the goal setting, to have the traffic calming, but does council want a separate meeting for that? And then, staff will work on getting a date for when everybody can meet for that one. Do we have consensus to bring it forward? Okay. And we talked about the, the council retreat already, so, or the goal setting.
How about, Paul, do we do the rest of the community assignments? You know, that we did some, or what about the rest for completing, or...
The only council assignment, the only one, there was the general plan committee, that hasn't been done. And that, that's all I have to, to report.
Okay, city attorney.
I have nothing to say.
Now you're bragging.
City clerk? No report. Police chief?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to report that I think Brett's already covered the vets park, we're waiting for a quote for solar, because it's, looking at the infrastructure, it was so old, that we were gonna have to spend money on electrician, and then we found out we can't, because it doesn't belong to us. And so, we're gonna go with trying to get that bid. For your information, the cameras on Beverly on both sides are installed and working, they're operational. So, we got that completed. And you covered the full-time animal control assistant that you mentioned, we're gonna try to make it part of the budget. And the last thing I wanted to cover was that, on January 31st of this year, CMA police officer Gonzalo Carrasco was shot and killed in the line of duty. He was responding to a report of a suspicious person in the neighborhood, and he was shot by a career criminal that had been sentenced to five years and only served six months. And if it's okay with the council, I would like that this meeting be closed in memory of Officer Carrasco.
Sure. All right. Any updates on city council projects? Councilmember Burns.
Thank you, the chief covered it. I would just wanted to confirm that Beverly had been done, I saw it on the date. Thank you, I, I'm sure that will be better and safer because of that. Thank you, chief, for your diligence in that area.
Councilmember Resendez, nothing?
And just to push, I mean, given staff, or the chief, for, as part of every budget, to try to bring in more cameras, 'cause they've been very helpful in keeping our community safe.
Okay, so, no other council members, so, new business with no items, miscellaneous nothing, success agency, nothing. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So, I move.
Second? All in favor?
Yes.
Aye.
Motion carries, the meeting is now adjourned.
Recording stopped.
Oh, my God, I can't even remember your name.